All right, being seven o'clock, I'd like to open the planning board meeting for April seventeenth, twenty twenty four. First, we have a public hearing for Alley Cats Realty Trust and Cellmates Realty Trust. Special peremptory drive-through coffee shop thirty-three, thirty-four Worcester Road, results in twenty. In accordance with section two hundred dash three point two, two hundred seven point one and two hundred dash seven point two. The Cheltenham zoning bylaw, the Cheltenham planning board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty four, seven P M via Zoom meeting. Leading ID number two-one-one-two-nine-three-two-two-five-seven. And in person in the planning board office, ringing back to George C. McKinsey Building, thirty-seven Main Street, Charleston, Mass. On the special permit and site plan application of Alley Cats Realty and Cellmates Realty Trust. A lovely sunset drive to Charleston, Mass, on five oh seven on a full of for a drive-through property window thirty-two, thirty-four Worcester Road. The drive-through is the only commercial use in the building. No other commercial use, the proposal is that property was located at thirty-two, thirty-four Worcester Road, Route twenty. Assessing map twenty-seven B block, C parcels, one and two, approximately one point one five acres in his own community business. This meeting of the Cheltenham Planning Board will be conducted in person and via remote participation. Specific information, the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or properties. With a right and or requirement to attend the meeting can be found on the Cheltenham website. At W W W dot cheltenham dot net. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen in or watch. The meeting may do so in the following manner, video participation, H T T P S, Poland, backslash, backslash, zoom dot U S, backslash, two-one-one, two-nine-three, two-two-five-seven. Meeting ID, two-one-one, two-nine-three, two-two-five-seven, phone access, one-six-four-six-five-five-eight-eight-six-five-six. Obviously, the special permit and site plan application are available for discussion at the planning board office and the town works office during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. I'm sorry, we refuse myself to understand.
Jason, you want to go?
Yes, go ahead. I'm sure where I should go, but. I usually kind of stay over here, but I don't know.
You need an easel? Do we have one?
So, Jason DuBois, D C Engineering Survey. I have the Alley Cats Realty Trust and Cellmate Realty Trust, thirty-two, thirty-four. Worcester Road on Route twenty and Gillespie Road, right along the intersection there. Existing construction, this is thirty-two, thirty-four. This holder kind of open and it's gravel parking in the back. Driveway entrances here, and they call it down in this area. There is also an exit out on Route twenty, that comes out right through here. This is a McDonald's site here. Proposal is to keep, as it now, this, this house slash, you know, small commercial building. Is proposed to maintain residential in portion of it and also a coffee shop. The coffee shop's going to be drive-through only, it's not going to be a coffee shop that people park it and go into. So we've kind of reconfigured the parking and the the drive areas. As you can see here, there's a double, double entrance in and out onto Gillespie Road here. And a single entrance through here, which is currently there now. We've added a decent amount of grass areas to the site that that was previously gravelled. So it's two-way in and out through here, so they come in here. Pick up the drive-through lane along this section here. Come around a border, there's a kiosk proposed right in that section, and then the pickup window would be. And then maybe we continue back out onto Route twenty. Get signed for right turn only in that area. And these, these are just parking spaces that were designating, I really know designated parking on the site currently. So this would be one way in. Which would be in and out, two directions, and then single, single lane through the drive-through area, and again, back out on Route twenty, which would be right turn only. Just a special permit application, really not a site plan application. So if any, any questions, I guess we can go from there.
You're doing this one?
Yeah, I recuse myself.
Oh, you did.
It was black, Simon.
Jason, so being this a public meeting, do you have any discussion from the board?
We have not received a report from Graves yet. I emailed Michael today, Andrew, and I guess it's school vacation week. So he is not back. He's up till Friday, so I haven't had his.
Well, everybody's here. Kids should be in night school. So, Jason, what, what, I mean, what's the timeline and process of this?
It's really possible. I mean, I'm not sure. I'm not exactly sure what Graves' curfew is on this, it's just a type of permit, it's not a site plan, so I don't know.
Why isn't it a site plan?
It's just a special permit requirement for drive-through.
Yeah, it's that the permitted in that. Well, with a special permit in the community business, so, but.
I mean, we are, you're going on Route twenty, so that's always a. A rub there with site visual, I mean, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of visibility coming out of that. They're becoming out of that driveway between McDonald's and that house, is that where the, the access, the, that there? So where's the drive-through looking at this page, Dave?
Yeah.
Is that where the drive-through is going to be?
Yeah, that's existing driveway, so they're just going to continue with that as the exit.
That's the exit?
Yeah.
Where is it? It's entering off of Gillespie?
Yes.
Okay.
And it is only supposed to be right turn only out of that, I think.
Have you, have you gone to Kirk yet with any of those?
Yeah, he gave a little letter there.
Yeah.
More about the building outside you thought.
Yeah, we just received it today.
So. For the chair, I, I think, I, I agree with you, I think my biggest concern is the site lines. And access, exit, egress from that site onto Route twenty. That's kind of a congested area, and add more congestion with the, the wall blocking and, and. Current building so closely loaded, David sends me that, it's just opening ourselves up for potential accidents there, so.
How high does that wall look to? You talking about the, the show?
Yeah, it's hard to tell from the pictures, but it's probably at least four feet tall, I would, I would think. I mean, I looked at it the other day as I'm on time, and it looks about three to four feet tall.
Excuse me, Rob Lomanski, one of the others, are you talking about the wall?
The wall along.
It's a block wall, I don't think it's any more than, than in twenty-four inches.
There's at least six steps down, they're short steps. And four inch steps, so.
That's, that's forty-two inches, if, if there's seven steps, but.
Yeah, they're, they're short steps, but they're not as tall as a normal.
I think you're talking about coming out of the front of the house, right?
Coming out of the front of the house.
Yeah, I think the car vision would be past that. Because I mean, the street.
Well, no, I'm talking about the block of, the cement wall that's surrounding. Where he's got one, two, three, if it's someone fries. You know, this house right here. There's this wall here, and I'm counting the steps that go down from here. To ground level, sidewalk level.
Yeah, I don't believe that would block vision from the drivers, the vehicles.
If I may, yeah. Robert Lemanski, I'm good, Dave Cantwell, okay, we, we, we own the properties. The, the driveway, the existing driveway that we're planning on using, that's been there for sixty years. And yes, the question is, is sighted distance. This sight distance is, is, it actually, because of the photography, that, that area, it's actually lifted up. And you get better vision, you can see way past the stoplight there for Path of the Hill. And like our engineer, Jay DuBois was saying, there's going to be mandatory right, right-hand turn there. Very similar to what is at McDonald's, that's our next door neighbor, our driveways are but. And, you know. This, this isn't a Starbucks that's going in there, but I mean, this is something that, you know, hopefully they'll, they'll, they'll do some business. But we're trying to keep it as low-key as possible. I, as an owner who, along with Mr. Cantwell. March third, we made application. Six hundred, seven hundred fifty dollars. March sixth, we were reminded that we did send it in, the, the two thousand dollars. To Graves Engineering for their, that's preliminary money for doing the, the review. March sixth, I, I, again, I went through frustration with Mass Electric and, 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 and Mass Highway six months, months ago. But the planning board needs to have a alternate reviewing engineer. I know myself, if I'm, if I'm running the business and I'm hiring people, and they're taking longer than five to six weeks in order to get this out. Guess what? I'm going to go to my, my number two supplier until they straighten out. You need competition. The competition, I'm not trying to look for any, any easy way out or, or, or trying to come up with a work, not doing what needs to be done. But what, what. So, it's time and money, and, and what happens is, this is what, this is what Graves is costing us. Is because he didn't get his job done, hey, I understand you, busy, whatever, fine. Pick up the phone and say, you need to go to Plan B Planning Board in Charleston. But the thing is, is I stressed you when I had this conversation with Randy. That the planning board needs to consider this when it comes time for things just like this. So that there may be neighbors here for concern, so we're going to come back again, because the people, the, the people were paying money, so can't get the job done. I mean, it's a bill by Belichick, do your job, that's all we ask, do your job. But anyways.
I don't think this would have went through in one night anyhow.
I, I hear you, I, I hear what you're saying, but the thing is, is there shouldn't be a reason to, to go and, and, and say, we can't do anything because Graves didn't do it. And that's, that, 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 that's what I'm saying. And the thing is, I think. One of these things here that Jay ended up doing the calculations is, we're going to have less runoff after we're done. Because it's taking away a lot of the impertinent material and then putting plantings in. So, what would that, that, that means?
I mean, this is the first week I've known of the plan, or any of us have known of this plan, so it's not, not like we're, we're trying to not be, be.
I care.
Be prudent in our review of the product. Project of us, somebody else has known about this, but. This plan is just, Jay is just the proposal, that's your foray, foray into proposing a project. I'm sure, I'm sure there's a more detailed plan to follow this. That's it.
No, I mean, there's nothing required, it's, it's allowed by, it's a why on the table.
By use.
Just the drive-through window, really.
Special permit, Randy, there's no site review, there's no nothing.
There was a special permit, anxious permit, prior to the site review, the question is whether this. I mean, you're going to do a review on it, whether it's considered a site plan or not, but in the realm of things, it's a very minor change. So how thorough Mike's going to be with the site plan part of it. You know, there isn't much from a site plan standpoint to review on the application, it's more special permit, what they're doing with the proposed use. Should be written in this, you know, in this location, and that's something the plan will basically have to decide based on the information provided to them.
I know there's a, to me, that's so dangerous with that, other people trying to turn left on, it's crazy. So then you're going to, you could possibly have a situation where a person is turning right out of this area and turning left.
They do have a right turn only sign there.
They turn over every day.
You know, people don't pay attention to it, every day when I'm coming to work, deal with that.
I, I could tell you that, I mean, it's a good idea.
You gotta save your name.
Happened till when he wants to return to Charlie. I could tell you, just from experience, not even twenty-five minutes ago, I almost got hit by somebody making a left turn out of McDonald's. And the thing is, people don't pay attention. Is the, the magic, the, the biggest thing, the biggest thing is, you've got a Dunkin' Donuts already, McDonald's has its own coffee, they've got drive-throughs. We really need a third drive-through in that one spot. So they have all the places, I mean, if you're on the other side of the road, you know, you probably want to have a problem, but, you know, it's, it's very congested right there.
Alright, so, I mean, we've seen as we not, not, I don't know a lot about this, and obviously, there's some concern, why don't we open it up to the floor for?
Can I, can I answer that question first? What was, what the current business in here now?
No, they're residents.
There isn't, so it, it is a change of use from what it currently is then?
Correct.
Okay.
From residential to, to, to.
That would be enough to make it a little bit more scrutinized, because you're going from a residential house to a commercial business. That's a residential driveway, it's really not a commercial driveway, what's the width of the driveway as you're going out there?
I'm there. Twelve, fourteen feet, something like that, which in, in a way even works to the benefit, because you've got to go slow. It's not as if it's like McDonald's, McDonald's has three different exits that you can e- e- exit out of. Most of the people take the exit closest to the, to the light, because when you come out of that drive-up, that exit is right there in front of you. They, they don't go left and come all the way back towards where we are, and then try to take a right or a left. But I do hear with some people, it's stupid things, and, you know, we can't control stupid.
Jay, are you, are we taking just one building out of residential and making it commercial? Is it going to be residential on top and commercial on the bottom?
Mixed use.
Mixed use, and the other building is going to continue as?
Be residential, yes.
You've got a building that's already.
Well, that's right.
Yes, there is commercial now, and they said.
Right, right, yeah.
Spend there for five, six years.
That's commercial, isn't it?
It's currently mixed use now.
Is there a different width that's for a driveway for a commercial building use than like?
Usually two-way would be twenty-four feet.
Oh, this is the one-way.
One-way. It's about four twenty feet.
Any signage by the, by the driveway? I don't see any on the plan.
Yeah, there's a right turn only.
Business.
Oh, the business sign, yeah, yeah, right on the.
But not near the driveway.
Is there a do not enter sign there or anything, or what would?
Um, the stop sign and a right turn only sign coming from the site, but yeah, we could certainly add it. Yeah, that should, that should be added there.
Is that sign is unaffected view coming out of the driveway, does people work down Route twenty? It's, it's, it is right, I mean, you are substantially higher there, but there seems like if you're, you're looking, you're sighted, that sign could affect your. Your view of the upcoming traffic coming down Route twenty.
I think there's still enough space, because I mean, you've got the sidewalk, the drive-through as well, so I think the driver's seat position would be at the sign or just beyond it.
And there's a sidewalk right in front of that retaining wall? Any lighting there on the?
Certainly, no.
Would there be?
Um, I don't know what Jay has on, on his plan, I mean, it takes much to put a poll up, but I know that. Flash McDonald's is, is, is lighting in, I'm not saying we're going to steal their light, but it is pretty bright.
Yeah, if anything, it would just be some building light.
Yeah, I see a propane tank at the back corner of that building also. Any ballers in front of it, or any other, I don't see anything on the plan.
That propane tank would be a rule.
It's on the plan.
It's existing.
It doesn't really make a big difference, but do we know how many residents live in these two buildings now? Practically.
Four people, five people live in them, thirty-four. Two people.
I think where would the employees park for this?
I think Jay's got what, fourteen and seventeen parking spots?
Maybe eighteen spaces, eighteen spaces.
Yeah, but, but that's a different lot, right?
It's one of the same, it, it's, it's, when I say it's one of the same, it, it has been recorded as, as one piece of land. Tarek had local engineering company survey it out and then do a plan, and that plan has been filed.
So is that being, is there an A and R for that to make that one?
Yes, there is. Yeah.
Because I don't understand why they would should be showing one line two there.
Because when we purchased it, we still had the, the legal description for each, for each building, so we went with that. When push comes to shove, it's one lot.
Just, I would like to confirm it's one lot. Not knowing that it's, I'm sure we have a file on that, and it's.
Well, there's a sound like there's been a deed filed to Leepole Claws is one lot.
The, the plan was filed, it had gone through the planning board.
Let me remember, yeah, but is, is there a deed filed showing these?
Well, I don't know, it's a deed, all I know is the plan. Again, some, some, sometimes, in fact, I participated in situations where there is no deed, and the, the, the transfer was just based on a plan. And it made reference to a plan.
That, that included both lots, because I know they did, you know. Plan where they cut property up on Wespe Road, this behind this property.
Yeah.
But I don't, I have to look at the plan, I don't remember the second. Includes on that plan.
Yeah, that's, you know, just so it's legal for the, for the building commissioner, because they'll be asking for parking spots and, and they can spot anything allocated to that building. That would just be, just be another puzzle to deal with if it's not, so.
Right, and, and I believe when Jay did calculations, he included both, the use of both, they'll, they'll, they'll determine.
Just so it's not, so we're not, that's the case, if that's the case, but so we don't stumble over it next time.
And can we get some, some elevations of that wall and, and sightlines and take a look at that?
Yeah, can we just make that parcel blown up a little bit, so we can, I know you have it there on, it's kind of. Just a bigger, just highlighting that area itself, the, the actual building where that is, or, or can it be just a little larger? They make a, instead of a larger.
Yeah, I mean, this is a twin scale, it's pretty big compared to.
Yeah.
We're, we're the electricity area here.
Yeah.
The exit.
No, yes, the building in concern, yeah.
Okay.
Where are the utilities for thirty-four?
Up ahead.
Overhead.
They're all, they're overhead as far as, as far as, and I'm a little sensitive with, with national grid. But then again, it's also connected to water and sewer.
Okay.
Yeah.
How about the service entrance coming in for electricity? Is it on that wall?
The service, the service entrance coming in for that building is on that, is on the drive-up window side. Yeah, in, in the front as well.
Front of the building, not on the front of the building.
It's shown, it's right here, it's kind of off the pole of the exit.
So John, I see you looking at eleven by seventeen, that's why I look so small.
You know. Alright, yeah. So two resident units in thirty-two and four in number four?
Well, actually, when, by the time we get done, there will only be two resident units in thirty-four, and there are two in thirty-two right now.
Correct.
Because the, the, the third one in thirty-two is the lady who is the, the, the therapy space.
It is not five residences, it's thirty.
One, four.
Five, because we only think.
Four residences is on thirty-four. And you're going down to two, or correct, one. What, what are your proposed hours of operation for this business?
We're taking the concept and we're going to be marketing, although we have a person that's, 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 that's interested in taking it. But I'm sure the proposed hours will probably, I, again, I expect it to be six A M to, again, seven, eight.
Has, has Mass Highway done all their widening in that area? I think they have, not that they're going to. It's been all completed already, maxed out to the extensions of.
For their current plans?
Yeah. Today, I believe that area is from the corner, where they put the new wall up there, going up. Capitio there, yeah, a little back. It's just a strip of land for.
It looks like it's part of this land. Jay, typically, on the backside here, it's like a strip of land, it's part of this? Where does it go to?
It just keeps going back, it was just a makeup area, I believe, right?
Yeah. They give it forty-five square feet. Plan that subdivided this from Gillespie Road, that strip was added to give them enough square footage for the lot. Yeah, it's, it's unusual, but.
Everything is unusual.
Yeah, partly, when they subdivided this lot from the Gillespie Road property lot.
I have one, just one more question, I first letter, you said the African should be aware that the Massachusetts State Building Code requires a registration, design, professional, perform. An evaluation of the existing building code analysis, and said something about, wow, and up above that about water and sewer? Unless a variance has been granted by water and sewer?
He did, yeah, Mr. Lake, we mentioned stated that it's on water and sewer.
It's on town water and sewer.
It's, it's on town water and sewer as a residential building, not a commercial building.
One of, oh, well, correct, correct.
So, you know, I think we need.
The line, you know, I think we need more information from Graves, take a look at this, and I've got some questions and concerns that you may address. Yeah. Will we hear from? Yeah. So anyone here to talk about this? Building? I'm all set.
Again, I can't just.
That is the first.
Again, like the planning board consider what I first talked about is. Plan B.
Yeah.
So.
That's a that's a different discussion, that's not part of this.
No, no, exactly.
Thank you for this, the feedback.
Yeah, yeah.
So just to recap, we're, uh, great, we're gonna take a look at this. If we continue it to next meeting, hopefully it's.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the holdup is, but yeah, it's beginning to roll in a realm of applicating, there isn't a lot of it. So we'd be taking substantial review from Graves.
So the next, our next meeting is May first. I'll make a motion and continue this, uh. Thirty two, thirty four Worcester Road special permit fell first on that. Second. All of it.
Hi.
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 It's already on, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Sorry for the the slow service.
Yeah, just wanted to tell my son, congratulations, I mean, this is his last meeting.
Maybe.
Just in case.
May first, it'll be the last meeting.
Thanks again.
All right, next up. Seven oh five, that a public area for a Moore and family revocable trust, reduce frontage law, common driveway special permit on old Worcester Road. And of course, with section two hundred dot four point two, two hundred dash five, or two hundred dash two. Point G of the Cheltenham Zone by law, Cheltenham Plainway will hold a public hearing Wednesday, eight oh seventeen, twenty twenty four, seven oh five PM in the plainboard office in the George. The King Street Building, thirty seven Main Street, and by Zoom meeting ID two one one, two nine three, two two five seven, on the application of David Moore and one seventy five, sound as their road, called the mass, and five oh seven. The approval of two common driveways and three reduced frontage lots, everything was. Sort of a party twenty four, twenty six acres, the first of building two missing. Two, two single family homes, the property is located at one twenty two and one twenty four, Old Worcester Road. That's a map thirty six block, C lot two and two point three, and is an agricultural rural residential A R sixty district. Copy of the reduced one H Y special permit application on rail on the claim board office in downtown Portland, which is regular business hours. Any person wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated for this meeting, members on the phone who listen to. Watch the meeting remotely, they do some of the following manner of participation, HTTPS, colon, Jackson, slash, zoom dot U S, backslash, two one one, two nine three, two two five seven, meeting ID two one one, two nine three, two two five seven. Phone access one six four six five five eight eight six five six. All right.
Uh, did anybody just take copies of, this is the revised plan, but. Have received large ups to assets and worth driven, eleven six seventeen good divorce, use a friend into the board.
All right, Chris, go right ahead, if you want to do your presentation.
Yes, Christopher McClure with engineering, um, here on behalf of, um. Um, the Moore family, the Moore revocable trust. Apologize, I don't have a full set of these, I came from another meeting and so I just double that, and I think, uh, this, this, uh, particular project, it doesn't have a development component of it, um. It's really, the intent is to, um, it's a split parcel A, which was stated as a twelve twenty four and a half acres. Into, uh, three, three individual reduced frontage lots, um, and. In the construction of, um, for the construction of three single family developments utilizing not two common driveways. So currently, there are two, uh, properties, um, adjacent to this, uh, one twenty two and one twenty four, they're also owned by the Moore family. There's a, uh, the the lots vary in size, but basically it's, uh, it's a nine. So going from east to west, um, there would be a lot one would be a, uh, little over nine, nine point three acre lot. Lot two would be a, uh, eight point, eight point eight acre lot, and lot three would be a six point five acre lot. Uh, the purpose of the common driveways is, uh, there are some wetlands that have been delineated by, um, people tact and they are on a, um, the lotting plan, and I do have a set of my hours that were done by my surveyor. Um, that shows the official, um. Uh, lotting plan for this, uh, development, well, for this, for this, uh. You know, splitting the lots. Um, currently, one twenty two and one twenty four. Share a driveway, um, there's a sixty foot easement that's going to go in between those, one twenty two would be served by. Uh, common driveway that accesses the back portion of the lot, the lot one. And one twenty four would have the common driveway, uh, with lot number two, so it's really just the. The additional portions of this common driveway that would access those, uh, two existing homes that are on that. Uh, that that are adjacent to these, to these properties. So, um. So both, you know, both the common driveway to reduce frontage special permits, you know, they're they're allowed by the, um, Cheltenham zoning by law, section five point one three. Do structures lots in section four point two, point four, point eight, common driveway. And our our plans to, um, conform to those, we have had a few, uh, we. Had revisions walk the grays, which responds to that, we have met with, um, the fire department, addressed their concerns with, um, the the turn, the turnouts for the, uh, common driveways. And also, I think there's a letter on file from, um, Mr. Meskis regarding, uh, his comments on the lots as well. So again, it's, it's really just to split them up at this point in time, there's no, um, the the more and irrevocable trust has no. Intent in developing them, all but to sell them off, to sell them.
All right, and I'll pack it, we have a Graves report as well as a, uh, the responses from, uh, the correction, I think there were only three comments from Graves on their report dated March eighteenth, and then the la- letter dated April ninth, Simon Cora has. Answers to all three. Issues. Does anyone from the board have any questions out there? To talk here, go ahead, Bill.
Through the chair, thanks, Mr. McClure, so. One twenty two is on the bottom, one twenty four is in the middle, is what will be the third one of it?
So, yes, so the third, um, so let's talk about, yeah, yes, it was goes, it was one twenty two, and then there was, uh, the two common driveways that get us access to lots one and two. Um, portion of the frontage of lot two is west of one twenty four, but because of the wetlands, um, we obviously did not want to. Put a drive access through there, and then the lot number three, um. Lot number three has its own access.
Right, it's all. No number for that one yet. Sort of like a street number.
No, we haven't, you know, we wanted to get this to meet at first before we, you know.
And there's nothing on these lots right now?
Nothing, no, it's a, um, it's an undeveloped twenty four, twenty five acres.
Sheds, barns. No utilities that you know of on these lots at all?
No, no. And, uh, based upon Mr. Meskis' uh, letter, obviously, there there is water and sewer available on Old Worcester Road, um, which. And so if, I mean, would have to connect to that unless they got away from.
Then, uh, there was mention of on the plan, is there a turnaround for that thirty by twenty? Uh, size on the shared driveway?
Yeah, there is, now, if you look, um, so in the past, there has been, uh, turnarounds that are adjacent, that would delete the dimension. That are adjacent to the house, um, and in speaking with, um. Uh, Dennis, he had requested we we set those off, you know, fifty feet from the house so that the. Fire truck has more maneuverability, obviously, uh, again, we're showing those as a, as a, uh, point of interest or or a point of. But it, you know, that would, I'd expect that it'd be put into the special permit approval condition.
So, and you're talking about like that turnaround looking thing near the house?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. And and that's what, um. Mr. Carlson was asking for something like that, probably a little bit bigger than what you've got shown here, these are eighteen by twenties. See, and he was looking for thirty by twenty?
Suppose eighteen by twenty, um, actually, these were. Hey, pardon, so look, yes, I guess I do have a few over here that, uh. Oh, uh, we included the actual width of the driveway and where you see the eighteen by eighteen by twenty.
Yeah.
Um, so it provides a turning radius in there.
Yeah. Could we make them thirty by twenty to satisfy Mr. Carlson?
Sure, just to, just to turn out itself, yeah, I think, I think that's his intention, yeah. To have that thirty by twenty, you know, and with radius from the driveway, I guess.
Yeah, I believe this, the whole potential, big buy.
Right.
Into room.
Yeah. Are there any hydrants going down?
Um, it, there are hydrants on Old Worcester Road, but there will be no, you know, they're not charged, yeah.
Before they, they are charged, that road is active, um, it's used for flushing purposes only, but, um, if you know, they. They have been known to connect to them if there is a, you know, fire in that.
All right, any other questions from the board? Yeah, I open it up to the republic there. All right, do you sound like you'll open up any questions on this, uh, application to the public, if you would like to speak, please, uh, state your name and address for the record. Go ahead, answer.
Above her is Eric Shea, is the current owner of one twenty two?
Yep.
It's no longer, you you mentioned it owned by the Moore.
Yeah, formerly, uh, when their, when their common driveway was constructed.
So the only question that she would have is, um, the new footprint of what you have proposed, I I've seen those plans. And there's concern with, um, where you show the, um, for sewer. Main and, um, you know, underground electrics, there's some big old trees there, right, five feet away. You know, I, I'll, we're kind of, uh. You know, have you looked at that, like, if we're gonna compromise, you know, rules and things like that, that that's the main concern from. Uh, one twenty two. Oh, yeah, and in between where you split those two driveways, there is an abandoned building there and foundation, that's all. It paved it. All right. That's all, just what I know, what goes, what of, what's gonna happen?
So through the chair.
Go right ahead, Chris.
Yeah, so through the chair, um, so there, again, the access. Um, for these, you know, the frontage for those lots in the property going through there is. Is defined through, you know, that, the the property boundary, um. The easement in the common driveway whis are outlined through the town bylaws, so we're kind of limited as to where that. Um, you know, well, the development would be limited as to where that driveway goes to maintain, to ensure that it's going through the actual property line. So I'm assuming that, um, again, without really looking at the development component, which we're really just trying to break the lots up here.
Right, I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, but but in the future, we would be interested in having that, you know, against one twenty two surveys, and you can look and see that. Few issues.
And and again, through this year, we, uh. Before any site plans, um, there's wetlands and other approval processes that would have to occur that you would be notified as an offender, so. Was, is it sold or someone decided to develop there, they do need to go through, um, uh, the site, well, we say site plan, but through a, at least a conservation commission filing, which requires a notification for.
Greg, go ahead.
Uh, Claudia Vlogel, one thirty sixth on Worcester Road, I'm a butter on the other side from, uh, one twenty two or one twenty four. And I haven't seen the plan, unfortunately, I didn't get up to get it, but my question is, where is the driveway, the other driveway going to go?
The chair, do you mind?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Is it going to go along?
Yeah.
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 So it's always been.
Yeah, his always.
Okay, so again, there's. And then the house is.
This is how, this one's.
But still being, still being the weather helps us.
It's the.
Always in the whitish shades.
Shows on the ground.
This this might be a revision beyond what we have.
So this is going to be.
It it could be, it could very well be.
I just confirm, trust me, some of that.
Okay, so this will be.
One, two.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, yeah, you all set with that? Let's explain it, all right, perfect. Hey, Chris, just one thing, uh, underground electric service you propose, I, you see it on the utility, just to confirm, correct?
Yes.
All right. All right, any other questions? Go ahead, answer.
Michael Mace, I'm on two twelve Worcester Road, so the opposing side of the property.
Yep.
I'm curious, I know this is like a soft sell, to see where we can get with it, before there's construction, before there's any idea of what's going in. From rough what I saw, I know you can't go too far into the property, and the idea was, once it's divided, once you can't divide again. Do we know any idea of where these are gonna be, what's gonna happen to the land behind it?
So I guess the bylaw states the driving, but only only so long on these, right, Chris?
Yes, yeah, there is a maximum length and.
Five hundred feet? Is it?
What was it? Five or six hundred.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, to the backside of that property, there is, um, some wetlands.
Yep.
Right, so, um. Obviously, they were limited by what they could do to the front, they couldn't subdivide this again, um, and anything, any impact they had in the, you know, the back portion that wet was, which are, which are delineated and shown on these plans, we have to be. Ordered with against the county registry, so they would always be, they're always gonna be noted with this blotting thing, for how well it's there. Um, it's a limit to.
This is, so the the family trust is subdividing to sell outside of the family, correct?
The, yeah, there there has been some, um. Uh, I don't know the the personal situation, but I know that David's, you know, there was a death and family, and then, you know, the this, people aren't, you know, the family members aren't living there anymore, so it's a one, and then. Look into, you know, as part of getting rid of the rest of the property.
And make most money by separating in this.
But, go ahead, Randy.
That, um, this is zoning by law, where you have to maintain at least five acres. So other than say giving a force or selling a portion of the real part of the property to a neighbor. They couldn't be subdivided again to get more houses on.
Right.
Based on the size of the lots already, they're all less than, you know, one, six to eight acres, something, they have to make in at least five.
Where where are the lots now?
That is proposed. As far as the acreage?
Six, they don't know if they have. For me, one is eight.
Eight point, uh eight point eight, and the other one is nine point three six eight.
So they don't have enough land that they could be subdivided these lots again in the future, they have to maintain at least five acres.
And it's strictly residential?
Correct.
Yeah. So there's no in the future, cause I'm right there, I'm zone half and half.
Yes, some of the lots on the route twenty-five are like that.
Something like this, you can snowball. Those, no parking lot, right behind your house.
Yeah, not there. All right, any other questions?
Do these all need two thirds of them for? Two thirds of them for?
Yeah.
They do?
They do?
Yeah. So all she needs is, it's in the uh, oh, she's twenty thousand square feet, there's two, oh, she know, forty thousand, cause it's in A sixty.
Through, through the chair. Just another question on the, the driveways, uh Mr. Thor, so on the one twenty-two lot, there's this, this house, uh the Shea property?
Yes.
So you're picking up that driveway too also?
Yes, exactly.
And that house isn't going anywhere, you have nothing to do with that house, you're just.
No, actually, yeah, so uh.
Currently, currently the existing driveway is within the footprint of that easement. But when they put in the two, they go use the whole easement, which is basically gonna take away what they're using now as their driveway.
So.
Yeah, yeah.
In the future, they're gonna have to add their own extent, you know, driveway, make the footprint bigger on their lot.
Yeah.
There's.
But I'm sure you're right along the edge, so.
Yeah.
It's concerned that.
I see.
Future could, you know, potentially.
Yeah. Got it. So then there's three properties served by this driveway.
Well, there's a, so there's the, that easement that goes through, there's a sixty foot wide easement with two driveways going up it, a share, it's two common driveways, so. We would say that, do that sixty foot easement is for, there would be. Four homes served.
Where, where's the other one?
Lots, lot, one twenty-two and one twenty-four, one twenty-four is west of um. One twenty-two, there's a lot of information in there because we're showing the lotting plan on here, but and then the two new houses, and then the two new houses.
Got it, we lot one, lot two, and one twenty-four, one twenty-two.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um Stacy Ovan to eighteen Worcester Road.
Yep.
Um, I'm just wondering how far back um the property is buildable. You mentioned something about wetlands, I'm just wondering how much clearing could have potentially happened from the lots being sold and built on. Because we've had a lot of clearing in that area that we have no say on, on both sides, so. Um, I know that's one of our biggest concerns, is more clearing.
Yeah, if you wanna show the, the print, Chris.
Yeah.
Page C eight, it shows you all by back they go.
So um, this is um basically, you know, declaring behind homes, but others, we find these homes, so if they were to, again. If someone wanted to clear beyond that line, in order to, in order to build these lots, they have to come from the condition, you know, that, if they go beyond that. And it probably does will be on. Probably so big that we have to speak with, but so. If, if the John is property line here, and what, what district, that's just a six foot, um, maybe the. Behind these two here, and leaving, you've been turned us on the side.
Right.
They wouldn't, you know, without going to conservation, and if not, whether you want to travel through this weather, it's clear, it's bad, and there's no, no traffic out.
Right.
Because it's weather, you have to make, so it would just be the years, the homes and.
Right.
Beyond this, this one's all.
All right, any other questions from the public?
Right. This is. So.
Go ahead.
Can I do all those direct?
Yep.
Um. When would be the next step where we talk about the issues that we brought up? Would there be another meeting based on site plan?
So. Um, like the applicant's engine, it said, it's okay, all good, no matter, no matter when they get ready to build or do anything construction, they gotta file a conservation. So I think from you guys being in a butter as close as you are, that would be your next.
Okay.
Step as far as that, with your concerns.
So it's an open public hearing, ordering condition.
All right, any other comments or questions from the board?
Chris, is there some detail missing on, on C one here? I don't see any roads at all, it's just what's like.
What was it?
There's some detail missing on C one, I don't see any roads, is it just way it puts it out or?
Pretty light, I think.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Thing on there.
Yeah.
Trying to get a better idea of where it sits and.
I do have it.
Do we have electronic copy, brother? Do you have electronic copies of this?
I don't know if we have, let's try to make this version of it, to we, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. I do have my laws here.
So when you talk to Dennis Carlson, did um. Did you note that there are four homes being fed from this?
Yeah. It's just, actually, that's even a lot. It could have been always the. So the. Or this is just. Yeah, these are just, this is to actually break all people. Sorry. I read.
He was the locust?
Uh, yeah, yeah. For those forty-four. So um. This side here, um center of town is, yeah, we.
Okay. So this is being street closer over here?
Yes, yeah.
And this is.
Twenty.
This is in twenty appear. What, but what, what lot is this, did you say?
Um, that is probably the um, probably we have talked about.
Okay. Yeah, okay, I got you.
And this is done. And another property, the N S seven.
Yeah, the middle, old middle pressure.
This looks like a uh, like a traffic island in the middle, it's small, but it's not, it's just a very wide.
It's a, yeah, it's a, there's a split between the two drives, they just stop, so they can, you know, maintenance purposes there. And for, for the defining of the um, the easements for both the driveways and those buildings.
So how wide is it right at the old Worcester Road entrance?
So at the Worcester Road entrance. Be here. So we're about um, so the, the um easement going through there, with two, each of the driveways is about, each, each of the common driveways. Uh, so let's say sixty feet, there's a sixty foot swath going through there with, uh, with radiuses on either side at the end to, you know, to allow traffic, you know, then you run to uh. And a common driveway requirement's eighteen.
Right, right. So. And then each driveway to the house will be about twelve feet as it narrows down.
Yeah, once, once we get past the area where that common driveway is required, then it'll narrow down to twelve.
So is this sixty feet of pavement, or did you say there's a separation?
No, so the, so eighteen feet, so there'll be twelve, there'll be twelve feet.
Or the easement's sixty.
Easement's sixty, each driveway is required to be eighteen.
Yeah.
And so that gives you um twelve feet on. It, well, let's say you split it down the middle, it'd be six feet, eighteen, six, six, eighteen, six.
Yeah.
So there likely could be a maximum twelve feet between the two driveways.
So you'd put like a little traffic island, twelve foot, uh whatever separation.
It would be vegetation, most likely.
Grass.
Yeah.
Between these two strips and eighteen still drive.
Yes.
Why not just make one big driveway? That worse?
Um, yeah, they, they, they have to be defined uh per the common driveway. Yeah. And, and we have to send easements and people don't wanna maintain, so now we're dealing with two sets of uh property owners maintaining rest of this.
Yeah, you would actually end up pretty much having a varying situation because you have four houses off one common driveway. Yeah, I have two presently.
We have three here.
Common driveway?
Yeah.
Just two common driveways.
Yeah, two common driveways, each driveway has two houses.
Right.
I found in the year.
Forty back four, if that's.
Yes, I got you. You got one here that goes up.
Yeah, yeah.
It's this one, this one.
Yeah.
Yes, you got the little spurs off for that existing houses, is it?
Yeah.
Right.
It's not falling under any kind of subdivision.
It's a lot to show.
And Warren.
But yeah, we got common driveways with people who are. Not related or.
Correct.
We're going into the snowing.
Yep, that's how they all are.
Yep.
Well, sometimes.
They have one on uh, the others over, there's four. One driveway serves four houses, right? Am I correct in that?
Yes.
And that, that one happened a long time ago.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Probably the only one.
Yeah, I think in ever.
Yeah.
People will be.
Two is a really good one.
Yeah.
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 So. So Graves doesn't need review stormwater in here, it's in.
Not at all, that would be done internally, submit them to deoncation.
Okay, yeah.
Which they'll have to do prior to getting building from them. Have to go to deoncation, get a word in provision.
You have a question?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So currently on one twenty-two All Worcester Road, when we uh, when we are exiting our driveway.
Yep.
The traffic coming from the east is hard to see around the radius on the property, so if we move our, our driveway now shared with lot one.
Yep.
Further east, now we're like reducing our sightlines even more on that radius. I just, I have some, it's just a concern, you know, it's already hard to pull out there.
Yeah.
So now to decrease what we see on a straightaway and to come out on more of a radius is, is hard.
So Chris, right now on this map, where's one twenty-two's driveway?
Uh, one twenty-two's driveway. Yeah, it's, it's basically, it comes down.
It's a little overlay of it.
Some hundred.
Yep.
Hundred twelve, twenty ninety-seven.
That's one twenty-two.
All right.
Four, and so it comes out right there.
Okay.
It, it'll be much because of that, you're gonna have to, eighteen foot driveway is basically sixty feet of clear, not clear, but it'll be opened up. And the radius is on, that radius is actually proposed here, um provide for more um.
Know there what is in the footprint of the existing.
Right, right, it's gonna be much, much larger than that because you'll have a driveway next to the driveway going right through.
Yeah, there you go.
Even though you got a radius, that's fine for a fire truck, the car doesn't even need it, but the issue is all the vegetation.
Yes, they, you can't see right now. Yeah, and that's, that vegetation, it appears is on, is on. I rent the property, right?
I feel like it's not even just the vegetation, it's like the curve of the road, the way the road curves.
Yeah.
And the free driver.
Yeah, and your driver's kind of at an angle now coming out.
Yeah.
They actually just hung a, um, the police came and hung a seat. The front seat on there. Don't be. Little mini child and auto bomb. We have the other half of it.
I imagine this easement was designed a long time ago, this would, unless they wanted to invest more money, yeah, it's been designed, it's gonna stay.
So you go, it's out, it's gonna be a whole way, the weapons.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, anyone from the board have any questions or comments? Do you have any concerns, go ahead, John?
Well, it's just been subdivided already in the A and R.
No. One parcel right now, twenty-four acres, that's it.
We need to do an A and R.
Well, they need to get this approved first, then they can do the A and R.
We could do the A and R regardless, right?
If they wanted to, yes, they could do the A and R.
Yeah.
We gotta wanna make sure this.
But it makes sense to get this approved first, so the day and I matches it, special permit.
Yeah, of course.
So it's like.
Yeah, go ahead, Chris, yeah.
So what you have here, um, are the Mylar plans, stand by a surveyor, um, for the um three, um, three reduced frontage lots, so basically, these are the lotting plans. Provide those um to, for your signature, so those could be recorded.
So you have to file in the A and R, so.
And then we would file this, yeah, this lotting plan, right, do A and R plan, creating the three lots.
Do we need to have a meeting, a, a public meeting for A and R in order to approve or seem like?
It's just a special permit at first.
Special permit, well, he, to sign these.
You'd have to get on, just separate agenda items.
Separate agenda items, we couldn't.
Yeah.
Because you're separating these lots here, you'd have to come back and.
Yeah.
So I'm meeting of the, you know, special permit.
We've done that in the past.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we have a letter from, from Dennis Carlson?
No.
Or just email?
No, only at these, I have response from.
Yeah.
They didn't get, they didn't count.
I don't mean to be a fan of the act, just the procedural, and how could we approve this special permit for not having the.
The lots haven't been divided yet, so.
What if, the only thing I say is, what if, not necessarily this, anyone, this should say that they, the boards, they would like to have this all. Okay, and you go ahead, waste the time and wanting to have a A and R done, when you gotta go back and redo it again.
They did file, it's like a double application, they filed an American for special permit for reduced friends lot. And they also filed this um, application for um, a common driveway, so they submitted two applications. The one for the reduced friends lot.
Well, that'll contain the books, this is for the.
All right, anyone have any questions or any reservations? I mean, would, do we want anything from the uh, F I G captain?
I'd like to see something from, from the F I G.
Okay, okay.
You know.
Okay. Yep.
Just acknowledging that he's seen the plans and, and he's okay with that, twenty by thirty and, and the addition of, you know, basically two lots.
All right.
Um, well, I don't know, is that, is that important to anybody else? I, I.
I, I, you know, I mean, Johnny, the procedural part of it.
Yeah.
I guess. I'm gonna have an issue with that. Go ahead.
I, I think.
A lot of order now, but here's, let's make these fights right.
It's got his, you know, I think they've reviewed, reviewed it, his notes are on here anyway, you know?
Yep.
I think he, he's accommodated the turnarounds, just to. Hold it up for that, you know?
Conditioner.
Yeah, yeah. Condition approval from, from fire department, um, you know, acceptable turnaround.
Our, anyone has an issue with that? We have a motion to uh, post the public hearing.
Anybody else comments? Anyone, anyone on the, on the, on the Zoom meeting call, um, public comments? Anybody else comments, anyone, anyone on the, on the, on the Zoom meeting call, um, public comments?
Oh, man, see that?
Making motion if there was a public second.
All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
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 So, all right. Discussion.
I'm making motion to to approve these based on conditions, actually the two conditions. Uh. Approval from fire department on on acceptable turnarounds for each of the new lots.
Yep.
So, two, two motions to approve both of these, so.
Not just be one, since there's more than public here.
One.
Okay, it would be for three reduced frontage lots and two common driveways in um.
Make a motion to approve a special permit for reduced frontage for three lots. And approve the special permit for common driveway for Old Worcester Road, more family. Problems. With the fire department. With the condition of fire department approval letter on the uh, turnarounds for each of the new lots.
You know, have the regular conditions, construction meeting. Know which procedure, and also just add in there which, I mean, the app can already know, but. Subject to the approval, the conservation.
No more questions, Chris, I'm sorry. So the radius of the entrance to that uh, was old Worcester Road, is that in the right away or is that?
That was defined as part of the uh, property, uh, the property boundaries.
Okay.
From from the else.
Okay. It's just hard to read these plans.
We have a second, on Bill's motion. Yeah, I'll second it. All right, all those in favor?
I I still would like to see. Something in electronic form on this side, I just, it's, there's, there's. All right, thank you. We, I don't know.
Yeah, upload it into the share point.
Yeah, I don't know about you guys, but I can, it it's difficult to read here, as far, you know, and you said you didn't bring the bigger plans or.
No, we do have a full size copy of that plan.
Of this plan.
That, yeah.
I just, I I.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm I'm just concerned of the way that the, you know, um, one twenty-four and one twenty-two get incorporated into this and and. Whether they're satisfied with this plan, I mean, as far as the driveway goes.
Well, it's clear that her property ends, easement begins, and he well designed his concept for those two lots. Um, the, the only concern we could raise was the trees, the big old trees that are right next to. And you're gonna put undergrounds, so you're gonna be digging five feet down.
So I would assume that the undergrounds and the utilities would go right through the middle of of that easement, and that's.
No, that's not what I see, you got it under the middle of the road.
No.
They're under the middle of.
So they're separate for. Yeah, it's just tough to s- just. You know, it's just tough to see.
So currently, um. Neither of the uh, one twenty-two doesn't have its own, doesn't, doesn't have a driveway, doesn't own a driveway. It's being shared.
They've got mentions through the right away.
Right, so, um, but they don't own it, so.
Which is even smaller than you're looking at, we'll see it there.
They could, they could say to them, hey, just put your own driveway, you know, like, if you want it, you could. You you should put your own curb cut in, doesn't really make sense based upon the tree, the movement, but it's time, so. That's where this, um, you know, actually that's. Because now they're gonna break me down on it, and.
Who maintains that, that common driveway?
It's in the describing, uh, even that.
That was gonna be one of my questions for you, and that's on, should be on Aaron's Steve, it will be described, described, once those.
Cause right now. Trenches for it.
God was questioning why you just can't run them. Yeah, but the thing is, is you gotta keep the water and the sewer separated by certain amount of business. So, I that, that's one of the difficult parts, and I guess, maintain in it.
As far as maintaining the, is it asphalt?
Well, you can't see this, again, we're, we're showing as a common, common driveway, however they constructed, whether it's. We asphalted up the year, and this is just, you know, they're equanimity, take the gravel from there, it's just not defining that at one time.
Once again, the moving case, he asked all the who does the plowing and.
That's, you know, that common driveway uh, component instead will be written in the needs to. Because they, because if there is an issue with this in the future, they have to have. These individuals have to be able to uh, maintain their, their infrastructure.
I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of work to go through this. On come and everything else to actually build this.
Right, the other side of it is, they, you know, some, the cell office twenty-four acres and have somebody come in and try and do some other. You know, sort of configuration, whether they would be going the road in here, but you know, multiple units in, this way it's just, it's just. You know, the three house lots.
When we do start the.
Let's see. Here, this one's both. Yeah, which I have with a fine.
It is.
Yeah. Lot frontage, I have um, ninety-eight, seventy-seven, and seventy-eight. Go all over this here.
What, fires in that zone typical, one seventy-five?
One seventy-five.
Correct.
Want to ask something?
Go ahead.
Why would you approve this um, special permit before knowing what's actually to come?
It's towards what?
What's gonna be built there?
It could only be a single family house.
Two single family homes.
Three different lots.
Yeah.
If they wanted to build anything besides what, when is it the plan boards approving? They would have come back here with a new application.
Is there an idea of square footage of property, price of property, all of that?
That's out of a.
Just call it a that.
Yeah, single family house.
That square footage of of the square acreage is in here, and this, the square footage of the lot. But the home is is, it's all just like you said, there's water runoff, there's still wetland back. That's all under what you. All we're doing really is dividing the lots up and allowing two driveways that not reduced frontage. What gets built there would have to go through another plan of conservation and building. Another matter to you guys. So it's something we can take under consideration. Which will be to a to a.
Now we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Yeah, we're in the discussion phase.
Yeah, is it?
I, yeah.
You'd rather withdraw and then think about it?
Can you, do you see, uh, is there an answer on the bigger prints? Or satisfy?
Yeah, I mean, I I I, I I understand what they're doing and and, yeah. I just think there's a lot happening on for reduced frontage lot in a small portion area, I mean. It looks like two lots could be reasonable here, but to put three in on. And and I know they have the acreage board, but the reduced frontage portion bothers me for these two. This lot, specifically this lot is sharing the reduced frontage with this lot, or or this is, so this is eighty. So between this and this, that's enough frontage for 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 one lot. This would be a reduced frontage lot over here, so now you've got three reduced frontage lots sharing. Very tight common driveway, is kind of where I'm hung up on. So I I understand you, the square footage is there, it's just to jam all that into. Yeah, I'd be more comfortable with two, this being reduced for the cheer. And reduce, well, this would be reduced frontage, right, this is. With the furniture.
That's volume three. It's defined in that hundred fifty yards. Like we've done, it's, it's also preventing us from having to barrel through the weapon.
Sure, sure.
So that's, you know, that's. Component of this, so lot three has uh, seventy-eight point two seven feet of frontage.
Okay, that's got enough frontage for this lot.
For this lot here.
This would not be reduced frontage, um, no, um, it it would be reduced frontage.
Seventy-five.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Seventy-eight.
Seventy, yeah.
Oh, they said one seventy-eight.
No, sorry, sorry.
Seventy-eight, so. Like I said, you've got three lots sharing less than what you'd be required for one lot.
Yeah.
It's really a reduced frontage lot.
Really reduced frontage lot, that's kind of where I'm hung up on right now.
But the tough part is it does follow the letter of the.
It it does, but it's a special permit for for. Or a shared driveway to to be able to do that.
We dealt the same thing, I drove by the, today on Old Sp- Old Spencer Road.
Yeah.
Remember that one?
Yep.
That one's very, and you know what, I drove like, and it's, I'm like similar, I mean, I know the board was torn on that one.
Yep, but that was, that was originally proposed as three lots, and it ended up as two.
Is that one there?
Yes.
I can't remember what it was, but it was their reduced frontage loss, the, the, yeah, we can follow the letter to the T as far as the. How how you read it and what they were doing, it it, it all fell into line, so I mean, the bylaw logic they do.
Yep, that, it's still the shared driveway on these properties, it's a special permit.
Yeah.
I think it's a bit of a creative solution to put both driveways on one lot, rather than have driveway, driveway, driveway.
On, but like a reduced frontage of each section, but, yeah, but they couldn't do that anyways.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the. All those in favor?
I.
I. There were two, two, and then I'm staying.
My two thirds.
It says it the third.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's that?
Right?
Yeah.
What's it? The bill?
Yes, it was two, two. This is a special permit. That's.
Driving order, I guess.
Might be, yeah, no.
Well, that, that's an interesting question, so because we voted on it.
Yep.
Combined.
Maybe.
You can't say that it failed because of the common driveway or failed.
Yeah.
So. From a engineering point of view, what, what do they remedy, the common driveway or the front of it?
Well, I I think.
Just to leave them something in a direction.
I I think having four common driveways is was really my sticking point, I mean, it it's just, it seems. To to divide the lots in that way, have that smaller frontage for for both of them, so it's a small frontage and you're sharing it with another small frontage. So it's really not enough frontage for two lots.
Yeah.
Yeah, being a small, you know, frontage for one reduced frontage lot in there, but uh, well, two lots out of that one reduced. Areas where I had the problem with it. So if there, if that was just one lot in there, I'd consider a a common driveway.
So if I could just, as a comment, um, the potential now without that common driveway. Um, then the one property, one twenty-two no longer has access. Um, not only has drive access to their property, potential.
Has has.
Without putting in their own driveway on a, you know, on a, in a, on a bad, bad, bad curve.
A new curb cuts. I mean, it's still, I I, that's. Still have a right of way through that, that property.
No, there is no, they're, they're, right now, their right of way is, um, they, they, they're, they're, they're being allowed to use it. Whether or not there's a a legal right of way there is another. So you have a deed of right of way on your, your driveway, your trend driveway now?
I know that before you signed, this went to town meeting, because we were held up from signing, we thought of a right of way. Correct, so I signed with the permission that I get to use it.
So there's a right of way for access to their property, which will have a driveway on it. Um. So this is gonna, in the, for the driveway, if we put the comment on one side or the other. Um, there'll be, you know, again, it's, 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 you know, I I think that, you know, personally. Again, from my perspective, it makes a both sense, both access to both of these, given where they are in the corner, and and given where that just single driveway is, but. Um, I guess we'll just uh, go back to, you know, review it, um, go back in front of you folks with, um. You know. Yeah.
All right, thank you, Chris.
Yeah.
All right, next up, we have a continued public hearing for GM Properties LLC, the Village Multi Family Units at thirty-five North Main Street. Did they, this was the uh, continuous?
No, they have not, we have not uh, have anything from. Conservation Commission about submitted to the Conservation Commission. So we basically have no more information than we have at the last meeting.
All right, and you, is there also food to reach out to the applicant to strongly suggest what their. Model, procedures, you can go.
Did we ever open? Do we need to repost again for a new public hearing, can we just cancel this public hearing and? Let them repost when they're ready, instead of having, you know.
We we have to have the app give request it, and then we can go to do that, but.
But he hasn't requested.
Continue.
Continue.
But we still haven't opened it.
Right, we have an office, so, but for the applicant to uh, pull the application, we need permission. Request from the applicant.
To pull there.
To pull the application and wait till they're ready to resubmit the application. And we did that similar to what we had to do with sixteen Service Road to the gas station.
Yep.
Because they had to redo their plan, so they just pulled the application, basically put it on. Because they had to redo their plan, so they just pulled the application, basically put it on hold until they resubmitted. So we had to have the request from the applicant to do that.
It has to start with them.
All right, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, um, our issue is, let me just, our issue is mostly, I didn't bring enough copies.
Yeah.
But the issue that we have is mostly forty-five North Main Street is the flooding that occurs.
I apologize. Sorry.
This application hasn't been opened in a public hearing.
To a degree, I guess we can't really talk about it. I guess we can talk about like what.
Should we be addressing our issues to the Conservation Commission?
Plenty of issues, yes, should be addressed to the.
Contact them because it's in their review process now. Well. So I, can we, can we leave it off the agenda until they come back to us and ask for, or do we need to continue this to a certain date?
I, yeah, but how can we continue when we've never opened? I think it's just only because.
The only thing is, is it was advertised.
So we're continuing with just so that we don't have to re-advertise it again.
Let him pay to have it re-advertise.
I guess legally, legally, what do we have to do? We can't just say, hey, you're gonna have to pay again. Well, he already submitted, it was already advertised and stuff like that. I just wanted to.
When's our last meeting in this December? We can postpone it until then and, and if they had to pull this in middle and re-advertise for an earlier date, they can do that, but.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know.
Till the second meeting in May and then go from there. They're not gonna have an answer from time to time.
Go right ahead.
So this is just the third time we've come. Called today just to make sure that we were actually discussing this.
Who'd you talk to when you called?
Um, I, I called and left a voicemail and then I received a voicemail, I believe, from Jane.
Yeah.
And then I know. Must have spoken with Jane or somebody.
But it's on our agenda, I mean.
Of course, I, what I'm, I guess what I'm. I guess at what point do they, like, do you guys just? Yeah.
Deny the application. I guess they submitted, I mean, they have paid for, they, they paid the money. Did an initial review. There were, uh, extraordinary number of items that came up on the review. I, I guess it's procedural wise, what are we allowed to do?
Shut them down.
They don't really, they're not looking to. Assuage their concerns, their concerns, you know what I mean? So they don't, they're not making it a priority. Yeah, so at what point do we say? Okay, either you have to pay enough, you know, again, to apply all this because you clearly are not invested as much.
Yeah, they blow us off three times in a row.
We all have questions.
But I, I, I know there was a misunderstanding, which is, it happens, but I guess at what point you just say you're not really putting the effort in. Right, that, which is understandable. I guess that's my question. If you guys are asking that question, that's my question.
So I guess, how about we continue to the first June meeting? In the meantime, they should be contacted by this office saying, we strongly suggest you file conservation first.
Withdraw the application.
If you're not gonna be forthright or committed to pursue, pursuing this application.
Rule to that, if they, you know, like a free strike rule if they don't show up.
I guess questions can be canceled, the public hearing now and just not hold it and they'll have to, they'll have to reapply for a.
How does that work?
They'll have to re-advertise.
They've already paid the fee for the advertiser, it's been advertised. That's a legal question.
It's a legal question.
Yeah, can we do that? Can we check in with that?
So what we might want to do, just to play it safe, is continue to May first, so we get a legal answer on to see what the board should do to proceed because they do, we have a number of days to open the public hearing if they're not ready, then the board can, you know, vote to deny the application or. Without them even asking.
So on May first, um, if they do come in. Coming in again, can we open the public hearing and then immediately continue it and that way you'll get some forewarning that it's actually going on?
They have months to get to conserva, I mean, this application has a lot of issues, so, you know, it's gonna take them a while.
And they have not even applied for conservation.
No.
Right, right.
So.
It'll be months.
Yeah, I mean, and now we're talking in summertime. I don't know what the Conservation Commission does during the summer. As far as meeting.
First meeting in September. Give them the summer to get it right. Or is that, I mean.
Just. I see, I get your point.
Okay, or whoever. And explain the whole thing to him and see what our position could be legally, should be legally.
So let's continue it to May first. If they come in and, and we can open the public hearing, we can talk about it. We will continue it so that you will have a chance to come in and, and, and also. I promise you, we will not open and close at the same.
Yeah, we definitely, I mean, I definitely want to.
If they come in and we open it, does that sound good? You guys, John, what do you think? If they come in, we'll open it and we can always continue with to give public more time to, for comments.
Yeah, they, they're also gonna get notified by the conservation, when they're having their meetings on this application. You'll be notified.
Yeah.
We don't have to continue anything.
No.
So, no, just continue opening the public hearing because it's been advertised in the paper.
So I'll make motion to, to this public hearing to May first.
Yeah, I see. Members could just keep the paperwork here.
Yeah.
That we, for the application now, pick them up later.
All right, I'll second, second it.
All those in favor?
Hi.
What's the question you had?
We just want to make sure that they don't sneak.
Oh, no, 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 no.
We have questions. Can we have many questions?
You'll be given plenty of time.
I think they've had plenty of time.
You'll be given plenty of time, at least as much as they've had.
No, it's fine. Thank you so much.
All right, next up, we have a continued public hearing from the Boston Artful Living, AKA Green Boys. All right, we have three, two, four, maybe about sixty. And then we have.
I cut these papers.
I just received, I didn't receive, in current matters this afternoon.
Yeah.
So I, I know that, I know Kurt had a question on the, the storage container being in setbacks, which we did move out, you know, that's the original plan. Um, so I sent him this copy today just so we could see that the storage containers were up in front setback and we pushed them back and then when the rear setback crew, we pushed forward. Um, and we received the email, he replied back about how there's no driveway to the site. Um, there's no proposed driveway to the site and it's not gonna be. Um, despite entrances, they've already in, it's been in the ten years. Uh, that's what they're doing in construction now. This is an accessory use to this site. So this is all gravel all open. Um, the driveway comes up and this whole thing is just open to, you know, to their accessibility. Um, I did email that back to Kurt, but probably too late and now he said he's gone to the twenty-ninth, so I don't know. Yeah. He's on occasion, yeah. Um, but there's no, there's no intent to do any more driveway cuts off of Route twenty. Know that it'd be safe into the site and the applicant has no intention of putting in another driveway into the site.
Yeah, it, at this point, it's just, uh.
Just the gravel accessory parking area towards Lansky.
Put in both detention bases, the, these engineers.
Yeah, we went through all the great comments. There was nothing outstanding. I mean, Graves didn't have an issue with driveway.
I mean, till the, the use of structure there, you know, it's not a.
Right.
Needs show a driveway, you don't know what the use is gonna be.
If he does have to develop the site, he'd be back and probably board for a common driveway. As you know, this is a large hill that goes up and plateaus right at their driveway now. So any driveway coming on the site would have peril site business coming, any traffic coming from, like the western side.
Probably meth, DOT will encourage.
Yeah, maybe they said that, they don't, they don't, they would issue a separate driveway permit.
And so how many storage containers? There's two or three on the.
There's seven total.
Yeah, three and then.
Yeah, now every condition approved, they have to be moved to the.
Somebody, I mean, these, these ones in the back have been here probably ten years.
So there are utilities on this site?
No, just the gravel.
Even for the trailer? Uh, for the other site, I guess.
Well, the office trailer isn't even on this property.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this is two twenty and this is two eighteen. The office trailer is actually on.
On the other side, yeah.
Yeah.
So is two eighteen already been completed?
No, it's, it's under construction. The building's under construction.
This is just for two twenty then?
Yes.
Okay.
Hold on to the same ownership.
No signage on this side?
No, it's really just for, they just have, you know, some storage containers and parks and Lansky Trailers.
Is there a limit to the quantity of storage containers or size or something like that? We're not violating anything there?
It's just that they were in setbacks. That was Kurt's original letter in June, January twenty-ninth, just mentioned that the storage containers had to be taken out. We did that.
Yeah.
Drive away.
Yeah. And then all the other comments that Graves have been satisfied?
Yes, yes.
It is a stormwater exercise. Yeah, yeah. So since these are two separate lots, um. If another, another business plans to take over, you know, um. One twenty. So two twenty, um, do they, they would access it to one eighteen? Is that?
If you were to sell it off?
Yeah, they would either require a common driveway or, you know, they'd have to propose their own driveway. Get into that lot separately.
And, and DOT has already said they really don't favor.
They said they prefer a common driveway.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think a common driveway would be suitable in this case. It's just, uh, I'm wondering legally. So can we, I, I guess we could always condition it that both properties.
Any change of use.
The same business? You have to, yeah. Yeah. Since it's, it is a common area, um, both lots would need to stay under the same business use entity that seem.
Yeah, I mean, if he, if he sold off that portion.
You'd have to do something.
Yeah, you'd have to, with a common driveway or they'd have to, you know, apply for a separate driveway. At this point, there's no plans for any of that.
Is there a curb cut there now?
There's a driveway cut in off Route twenty that they've been using to get into the site and he's, they're, they're dealing.
And that's on the two twenty site?
Yes. Uh, two eighteen side. Two eighteen is the building side that they're putting in the building right now.
Go ahead.
May I address the board map until one eighty-one Sturridge Road? I'm familiar with the site. And that driveway that they're using has been there for forty plus years. It's basically just a dirt.
Yep, correct.
Just, just thing. It's been there for over forty years, so.
Yeah.
You know, and, but my understanding is that when that land was there, um, you know, it was, as I said, there was two parcels and you couldn't build on it because you get the turnpike right in the back.
Correct.
You know, so really the only thing you could use it for is, you know, equipment storage. You know, and I have no, I really would have no objection to that as a butter because, you know, actually, you know, it's being used.
No, I, I don't have any problem with that business being what it's in there. My question is more of legality. Can we allow two pieces of property to be accessed from, from one driveway?
Yeah.
Which I think is the right thing to do. But it's not been approved for that, so.
Yeah, I know that's. The, the tough part is because of the grade.
Yep.
Because if you think about it, okay, two eighteen, you're gonna have a driveway that's going into a slope, basically like, like this. Up an angle, you'd.
Okay, how do we condition that?
And you gotta change the ownership?
Or change, change of. If they wanted to come in here and then have some leases to gravel processing company.
Yeah.
You know, I, I just, I, that concerns me that if it's a change in use and another business comes in here and they're both using the same driveway, whether it's suitable or, or that business or.
If you want.
But I, I, another business that's like that or.
Yeah.
Anything that comes, anything that would be on to that proposal, that site would have to be site plan approved.
Yep.
What you could do is addition to any change in ownership property would require an easement for the common driveway. You know. Right now, they're not both the use, but should it change the use or change in ownership of the property? Require an easement for, for the second parcel. Make sure that somebody has the right to access through that driveway.
I agree with that condition, yeah. I'll make motion to approve the site plan for two eighteen Sturridge Road based on the conditions. Including the conditions that any change in ownership, change in use triggers a site plan. A second.
Yeah, it won't be a change of ownership.
We have to close the public here. I guess, right?
We need to do that first.
I'll make a motion to close the public here.
All those in favor? All right, do we have a motion to, Phil, man, the motion on?
We, uh, restate the motion to approve the two twenty site plan. Based on the conditions that any change of use of that site triggers a new site plan review.
And change of ownership, I put use in or ownership just to cover our bases.
Good, I'll second, all those in favor? All right, next up we have public hearing continued for Z P Battery Development Company, L C Battery Energy Store Assistant at two eighty eight Saltridge. Rule, we have an email from Tom Colbert. Hi Randy, I'm still awaiting confirmation to move on from the building department, if you please continue this hearing to May first, twenty twenty four. Uh, and also on behalf of the applicant, Z P Battery Development Company, L C, I'd like to create the planning board and extension of the timeframe which. To open, like, hold the hearing for an additional forty five days to allow time to work with the building department prior to hearing application. Thank you for your time and consideration of this application, Tom Colbert. All right, we have a motion to continue this public hearing to May first. We didn't even open this one. We did open it. We did not open it. Correct, the reason being that there was a zoning issue with the, uh, property owner in this.
Yeah, they, they, that's why he gave me permission about that. Additional permission about ultimately the public hearing because. They're, you know, they're waiting for the property owner, resonating the applicants to, they're just stuck until the property owner results is issued.
Okay, he's requesting what, forty five days according to the letter?
Yep, per his email.
So we would do.
Do we need to leave a load of that?
Well, we need to accept that, that he's requesting the forty five days and then they've asked him for a request on his item. His public hearing.
I miss you, month May.
The G, June fifth is the first meeting in June.
This is the.
Maybe the second meeting in May.
That's only thirty days. So we need two more weeks after that, so it'd be our first meeting in.
Yeah, which is June fifth.
So I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing or continue the opening of the public hearing to the May first. And can we do this in a motion?
Yeah.
And, um, continue the timeframe for holding the public hearing for an additional forty five days from today. Second.
All those in favor? We've been sweet if the applicant at the seven ten had the same kind of foresight from forty five days. It is what it is. All right. Next up, we have a continued public hearing for Curtis Hill Estates, Curtis Hill Roads, plus development dependent plan often we spend some road. Kui, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
How's it going?
So welcome back from vacation.
Thank you. Well, actually, it wasn't vacation, my son was deployed.
Oh.
He's a special forces kid, he's four, six months.
Well.
In, in combat, so.
Wow.
I, uh, it was nice to have him home. He was coming home that Thursday, so we went down Wednesday night to see him.
Thanks, Amanda.
Thank him for his service for us, that's, that's, that's quite admirable, and you've done a great job there.
All right, so where we left off last meeting, um, was, uh, with the, uh. The tunnel underneath the train track.
Yes, I, I just wanted, if I could maybe elaborate on that a little bit, so.
Yeah.
I, what I understood from the last meeting that I, I wasn't here, is that. There, there were concerns of, of the access to the, to the other side of the, uh, the fourteen acres that exist on the other side of the tracks.
Yeah.
The only reason that we need to even include that is for lot count.
Hmm.
So we're determining, trying to determine lot count, so what that does is that adds five lots to the site.
Good.
So, the trust really wants that and, and I looked at, I looked at the bylaw a little bit and. It says. Preservation of open space, agricultural land, forest and woodland, historic and archaeological sites. Or all of the natural resources maintain the town's traditional England world character. That tunnel, I think. Makes that actually work to that, to that part of your, what you're doing. And we're only talking about, it's just five lots, I mean, it's not like it's, it's the end of the world.
Drop the five lots.
Why?
That open space is not contiguous to everything else and we're gonna have a problem on that, okay? Um, it's, if it's only five lots, drop the five lots, forget about that open space and you can get building tomorrow.
But the trust is gonna be, they, they want that, that they want.
Trust and us have nothing to do with each other.
I know, but that's.
She can still work with you on obtaining that land if you own the land.
Yeah, but I mean, if I can't use it, why would I turn it over, why would I even use it for open space? It doesn't make any sense. It's, it's, it's not, it's, it's accessible and that's number one. Number two. I, I think at least on two different occasions, you guys have told me you were okay with the lockout. We do a lot of plays.
I've never said that. I have never said that.
But we, but it has, I mean, I, I watched the January seventeenth hearing, I, and I specifically asked a question, okay with the lockout? Came back, yes, we're good, lock counts good.
Although we voted on that, but I, I did say that, I, I was leading that way at the time.
Yeah, so I just, it's lot count and I, I don't wanna drop the five lots, I mean, five lots at retail. Is about two, oh, close to a million dollars, so it's not like we just dropped the five lots and I know, a hundred million bucks. So, uh, the point is that it, it's a fourteen acres, it's accessible. The trust wants it as part of the open space, it should be part of the open space.
So have we ever approved a, a, a flexible subdivision with a lot of land that was not contiguous for the property that? That's part of that subdivision, because it really isn't part of, it isn't contiguous, you have access to it from there, you have a legal right of way to get. Through another property to get to it, but it's not connected to this piece of property in any way.
Because the United States government put the railroad through the middle of the guy's property. No, I can, I can develop, I mean, at the end of the day, really, if, if push came to shove, I could get a road over that. And develop it, because the railroad can't stop me and you can walk to it. What I was told by Alan Gordon, that's how long we've been doing this, is if you can access it, you can use it. So we did, way back a year ago, maybe it was a year and a half ago. We presented it this way at the preliminary stage, everybody was okay with it. We get now, and, well, maybe China, you might not have been, but I mean, the, the general consensus was it was okay, so we went on. We did the subdivision and it's, so now it's a matter of getting the open space. To, just to use that, a lot come. It's, I mean, honestly, it's five lots, what, what, to, at the end of the day, what? Is it gonna change, how's it gonna change anyone in his life?
Go ahead, just go.
Comment, I kind of agree with you, I think. It's putting it into the Charlton net number, you know, size of open space that's available to the town. Agree with that, I think it's just the difficulty to pass is certainly evident. If there was some effort to clean it up, pave it, put a light in it, put a sign near it, you know. Clean up that passageway.
Oh, I'm happy.
That would go a long way, I think, but that's just, that would go a long way for me, I should say.
It can be a condition on a special property, I'm happy to do that and I'm sure that the, the trust would like that, don't get now. When you add it to the, to the trust land, they have the abutting piece of property, so it really makes that whole area. Nice, and this, this is the only way that they can really access that property is if we give them this one. So, I mean, it, we're talking about five lots, it means a lot to me, but at the end of the day. Five more houses in that site, it's seventy two or sixty seven, what? Why, why can't I use that, make everybody happy? If you, if you have some conditions, I'm happy to. To oblige you, I mean, I, I don't know why we, we can't come to some consensus on it.
Lisa, you can speak more, go right ahead, Lisa.
Just, just a quick comment.
Yeah.
As far as contiguous, this is one parcel. If you look at it on the assessor's map, it has one parcel ID, the deed has two tracks, one parcel. So it's a hundred percent contiguous. It's not like we're dealing with two different deeds and two different parcel IDs, it's a big single parcel with an easement through it. So I, I.
It's not an easement, that's.
It's an easement, it's a, it's.
Is the easement.
But they own that property.
Yeah. Yes, it is, it's an easement to pass from one parcel, from one track to the second track.
We have these.
You have the easement through their property.
Right.
So it's, it's broken apart, so you, it's.
But according to the assessors, it is not broken apart and according to the deed, it is not broken apart.
Well, the chief of office is wrong, you may not be aware that it's check the train.
Well, the deed's not wrong, the deed is one deed, the deed is one deed.
It is, it is one deed.
So it's contiguous at the end of the day.
I, I mean, it's one deed, but it's not contiguous.
Have we heard that from the lawyer yet?
No.
Okay, so.
The lawyer's been submitted all this information along with the deed information, to get his opinion because. There's a big concern about, this was approved for cow access, not public access, and now we're giving. Permission if the planning board would approve it, it's a plan we're giving public access to.
Something that was.
Something that was meant for a private property owner.
And what's the liability to the town is?
May I answer, I can answer. Questions, first of all.
We're waiting for, appropriately waiting for our attorney to give.
He, he just asked a question, I was just gonna answer. Yeah, so, so first of all, I've had in this town a few, uh. Open space flexible developments approved and they're, they're open space on them. The town has no liability on anything that the planning board approves. I'm the guy that has the liability, I own, uh, whoever owns the open space has the liability, you can't. You can't say, well, the town approved that, so, you know, and, and it's, that access is not just for cows. If the cows can cross it, obviously people have to cross it.
Wasn't meant for people to cross, in that timeframe, that was never meant for people to cross.
That's not correct. No, that's not correct, I asked my lawyer that question because that came up and my lawyer did say.
Bargain this back and forth, but we're gonna wait for, in the group of five, what our attorney is gonna tell us, so.
So, if your, if your attorney comes back and says you have access, what does that mean?
That's not the question we're asking.
What are you asking? Really good liability?
Right for public access.
Public access.
To pass through the tunnel. To get to that other piece.
If I give them access, they have access.
It's not, it's the railroad tracks tunnel.
But no, it's not, it's mine.
You have an easement to it.
That's mean I have an easement to, to pass back and forth over it and I can do whatever I want with that easement, it's my easement.
You can as a property owner, that doesn't mean.
I can give. But if I give them access, they can have it. I know, I mean, I've, I've been in this, doing this business, I've been in this business a long time. I know, I mean, that's the way it works and lawyers can tell you whatever they wanna tell you, but if I wanna give you public access, I'll give you public access. Uh, it's not me who's gonna do it, they're gonna own it and they're gonna have public access to it, not me. Once it's an open space and it gets turned over to conservancy, or who, is that your name? I, I mean, I, I, they, they, they get, they, they're the ones who have responsibility, the ownership, everything. But it's just about lock count, liability is never an issue on, on a plan. It's, it's never an issue with the planning board, I've never had anyone say.
You've never had this quite unique situation, I've never seen it before.
For lock count?
No. I guess the situation of the open space with the easement.
Under rail, oh, I get that, but I mean, all it is is lock count, I mean, it, it, put it all behind, it's, it's just about lock count. So, I, I mean, I, I believe that I deserve. To get the five lots from that piece, turn it over to the land trust, everybody's happy, especially the land trust.
So does that cow tunnel actually open up onto this property? Or do you have, um, a right of way from the, the, I guess, the west end of the, of the tunnel?
I have right of way from both sides.
Right away, but it doesn't actually, okay.
Yeah, it, it, it's all contiguous, it all connects, it all, it's all accessible and.
But at the end of the day, you're not gonna own this anymore, right? I mean, the people who buy the properties, they're going to own it. No, I'm talking about the whole bid, how many acres are up there, you're not going to own it.
Let me ask a question, special, the, the land, the open space or?
Where you're building your homes, the homes.
Well, when I sell it to the end users, they will own.
They will own.
But they won't own. The, the, the land trust will own what you're talking about, the land trust will own the open space. So, we, we designed the open space, we met with Lisa and we put the design together so it would work for them. And, uh, all of this was contingent upon the fact that they really want that piece across the other side of the tracks. I walked through there myself, I mean, it's been there for a hundred years, where's it going? It, it, and the public, I'm sure, is using it all the time. I mean, I, I don't, I, I can't imagine, if, if people and kids and everybody else, but if a cow can walk through it. A person has to walk through it, I mean, you have to, you have to get to the cows, if you're a farmer, you gotta get to the cows. Yeah, you have to get there, so it's just about lock count. And it, it, I mean, that's, that's really what it is, I mean, I don't see why five lots at the end of the day make. Uh, or break the planning board's decision as to whether they should approve it or not, I mean, that's what we're talking about. So it's sixty seven lots versus seventy two lots, I prefer the seventy two.
Absolutely.
And, and, and quite honestly, it's, it's like what I thought, it's probably worth that retail somewhere close to a million bucks.
Just another.
Yeah, go right ahead, Phil.
Through the chair, I agree, I mean, if you look at, I think the spirit of the open space in a flexible development. Flexible development enables us to developers to put houses affordably into a community. And the open space clause within that isn't so that you create a. A playground in the middle of all of these developments, just to put open space into the town itself. And alongside the flexible developments, so that we have open space still, it's not crowded with houses. I think this satisfies a lot of that requirement, it doesn't have to be a beautiful playground right in the middle of the flexible development. He is providing it, he's been here, you know, it's taken a long time to put this development, this design together. It's not taking away from the beauty of Charlton, it's not immediately in the middle of the flexible development. But I think it satisfies the spirit of what the flexible development open space clause is asking for. Even though it's, you know, and it in fact is getting another big chunk of the existing open space that's there with the, the land trust.
Right. Still a question?
No, but, but I will make a comment, I mean, I, I, I did walk the property, so I did go it out there and. Came in from, through the property, went up through the railroad tracks because there was no way I was coming back up that, to get out of it. So, so I, I have seen it, I have seen the tunnel, it's in quite a bit of disrepair right now. With the pruning that they've done from the, from the railroad tracks and where they just dump everything there, it's not easily accessible by any means. Or feeling safe going through there.
Two different ones, did you?
No, 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 there's three different ones.
Well, there's only two on.
There's two culverts, yeah, there's another culvert a little bit further up from you that's on the L F P property, that's. There's a stream that goes through, I can, we thought that was it at first and it was a, what, at least a foot and a half of water coming through there. Um, it's the one that says nineteen twenty one, that's the one, right?
I don't remember, uh, but I remember.
When you come through it from the fourteen acres, there's a, there's a fence that forces you to go around.
Yes, and that's the other thing is there, there is a fence there that kind of blocks the property from.
Correct.
From, and you'd have to follow that fence back over. But it's not easily accessible, um, in fact, the other culvert that's further south from there. Wouldn't be accessible at all, I mean, you've got, there's, there's probably a sixty foot drop off. Yes, yeah, so we, we did see it, I saw all of them, I know, I know where they are, um, and. There is a, there is a path that leads from your property down there.
Yeah.
Then, so at least most of the way, but as you get to the railroad tracks, it's, it's a mess and it's not easily accessible.
It could be made easily, except.
Yeah, I, I mean, un- until they come back and prune the, the railroad tracks again and. And just dump the branches on top of it, it's buried with branches, so it's tough to even find.
The land trust would grab, but I, I had, I heard somebody say, so, isn't it the last meeting today? Did I hear somebody say?
No, he's got one more.
Oh, okay.
Although, but look at his face right now.
Old man, old man throwing out rumors.
I heard him say it. This is the one that's on the way. What what?
So I that's that's kind of my feeling is is it's. I'm I'm worried about setting precedent of non-contiguous land from and and although it is on the same parcel, I I understand. And I can understand why the conservation of the the land trust would. Want any property. I get that.
Oh, we don't want any property.
Well, any property.
Yeah, they wouldn't take the last one.
And it would take the last.
They wanted. Ended up with the great older land trust on the last.
Actually, I hear what you might think.
With the wetlands and the hill and the grade on it, it's not easily accessible from. From many other places either. I mean, it's it's.
But from their land, to get there to it, I mean, let's face it, everybody's coming up the tracks. To go through there. They're not gonna come down from the top. They can park at the top. They can come down from the top. You can make walking trails.
Which worries me even more if we're encouraging walking along the tracks and and. There's a lot of kids in this neighborhood. I can I can count them already. There's at least forty or fifty kids in this neighborhood.
Well, I'm just saying, it can be made so that it's safe. Um and and you know, and like I said, I would do that. I can't see how you'd be setting a precedent.
Would it require, would it require a fence all the way along the property line? All the way along, you know, to to block out other crossing areas and kind of force.
Yeah, maybe.
People to go through that tunnel? That's the other thing, because it it. I I know it's it's built on a railroad track and people choose to live wherever they wanna live and and take the responsibility for. The land situation, which is fine, but. Um if you've got land on the other side of that railroad tracks that you're encouraging people to use. You're encouraging them to cross the railroad tracks.
Well, I I would, the only thing I wanna do is use it for lockout. And that's and that's where I, I mean, that's where, so it is in my opinion. It's it's one parcel. It it it's it's contiguous, yes. The railroad does go through the middle of it, but we have access to both sides with an easement. I don't see a precedent because I don't really see another situation like this in town, so I can't see where you'd be setting a precedent. It it really is is focused on lockout, and that's really what I think, it you know, it. I would ask that you you let me amplify the lots.
That's, I think we have to look at the liability of the planning board, which is why the attorney is looking at it. If we, the planning board gives approves this application with that tunnel. Going to somebody else's land. And somebody gets hurt in that tunnel, they sue the railroad because they own the land. And the railroad's gonna say, well, who gave you permission to use this? The Charlton Planning Board. So. You know.
Just, I guess, just for reference, what's up with the, because there's a tunnel underneath from twenty? Yes, what's the deal with that one? Is that for the uh mid-state trail?
Yeah, it's a cow tunnel.
It's a cow.
It's a cow tunnel.
It's a cow tunnel.
It's the same thing.
Correct.
There's no liability.
It's the same thing, and I will point out again, because I did not make the last meeting. The land trust owns open space on Marissa Circle that of us the railroad tracks, and the town. Owns two right next to us that are right on the railroad tracks. There is no fencing. There is no sign. You know, you can't legislate stupidity. Okay, if people wanna walk down to the open space and cross the railroad tracks. That the town owns the open space on the other side, that that's, you they're, you're just as liable.
Yeah.
As you are in this situation. So I just. I I. There's there's already a precedent set that you accept open space on a railroad. Doesn't matter if it's a tunnel, doesn't matter if it's an easement, there's still a safety issue.
This is linked to a subdivision, and a subdivision. In open space, and so that has, there's no subdivision, there's no.
It's so-called solar heights. I don't know what it's.
Yeah, but there's nothing, there's no subdivision, there's no future. Problem.
But you understand that town accepted the open space on the railroad tracks.
So here me up, so no, it's not, because he's proposing a subdivision. This is part of his subdivision plan. In order to get more, in order to get the five more lots to access this land. In order to to to. Fill his requirement for open space, which is but which. I I I don't give a shit, or excuse my language. If if it's if it's five or five hundred lots, it doesn't matter to me. What matters is the intention of the subdivision rule that we have to apply to other. People that come up before this pro- this board to move forward, so. We might be presenting this, maybe the next guy, please. Down the road says, oh, I wanna, I have, I have like a a string and a a line and something that. Gives me five acres down the road, so I can build more houses on this property in order to fulfill my. It it opens Pandora's boxes to the town, to liability, to. To interpretation that. The the intent of the subdivision, the flexible subdivision, is to have land next to the houses. Cause it's gonna be densely populated, so the people can get out and not look at somebody in their backyard. Maybe there's a ribbon of space there. The kids can play out there. They they can have a picnic, a climbing yard or something. It's not to traverse through the woods, down across underneath the the tracks to another piece of property. And I I understand that. I would, and clearly, I really don't appreciate. The the pitting two people, two towns. Uh entitates against us. I understand that. You could be very magnanimous and just give them the land.
So let me ask you this. The land trust owns Little River, Holymaw Road. Have you ever walked the trail?
Little River.
Don't fall in the river.
But it's not.
Where it's not fenced off. The land trust owns it. It's freely accessible to the public, and therefore we are not liable if somebody gets hurt down there. It it's.
But it has nothing to do with a subdivision.
This is a subdivision. It's a flexible subdivision that was conveyed by the planning board with all. Same things, three different parcels, and this huge detention base and it's not fenced.
Contiguous to the property.
Yes, but my issue is it's not any less safe than walking through a cow tunnel we already have in town, and we already have.
I would argue that this is contiguous. If if you imagine there's no soil where the railroad track, and it's a sidewalk. From this lot to this lot, and there's a sidewalk, well, that's contiguous. But all of a sudden, you put a railroad and a bunch of soil there, and it's not contiguous. What what if what if there's no, nothing over your head? And there's just a sidewalk between these two.
It is. Clay, one more, and then we're gonna.
I would like to say.
Wrap it up, yeah.
So in order to get the lockout that we got, we had to prove. That we could build houses there. Which Graves approved. We proved that we could build houses there, so you can put a road across a railroad track. And now you can build houses there. So. That's how we determine the lockout. So if I can build houses on it. Why can't I use it for open space? That that's so, there was no other way to determine.
You were going to build houses on the suburban piece of land?
I can build houses there, sure. I I had to prove that.
Is that the plan you put before?
I did too.
The road going over there?
Uh yes, in order to get the lockout that I have. I showed a road going over the railroad track, and roads in there, it's fourteen acres, roads in there and houses. It it can be done.
Well, is that the one that's in front of us now?
No, because I made it a flexible site, and I used your rules. So what happened was, in order to get the lockout. I drew a road and lots, so it can be developed. So I mean, but it's be- it it's better for the town, it's better for everybody to do the flexible site. It's five lots. That's all we're talking about. Like, the planning board, and I I can tell you this from. Vast experience, the planning board has absolutely no liability. If you approve a site that meets your rules and regulations. You have absolutely no liability, none. There's never been a case, I can tell you, in a million time, million years where they sued a town. Or a planning board for approving a subdivision that met their rules and regs, just the opposite. If it doesn't meet the rules and regs. If it does meet the rules and regs, you must approve. That's the law. I've won cases in court because of that. So this meets your rules and regs, and it makes a good case. For the, I say the bylaw itself. It 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 the 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 cow path under there is historic. It's been there a hundred years. If the land can be developed, I can build a road, put houses there, but I chose not to. Because of of that. I've never seen liability, so. It we we, in order to get the lockout that I got, I had to prove the Mike and Andre that I could build. That many lots, and you guys give ten percent over that. So we came up with nine lots in there. And we got seven, we ended up with seventy two lots. Otherwise, it's sixty seven. So. It it all, it's all according to your rules and regs. It it's not at a position where. Uh I I've asked for anything that's against the rules or anything like that.
There's no waivers.
Uh no, nothing. So I mean, please, I mean, it's just, it's it's about lockout. That's all it is. There's no liability, and I've proven. Proven, and they've improved it, that I can build houses there if I want.
Would the road over the railroad tracks require approval from the railroad because it's a separate.
And you can't stop.
No, it's gonna be tight.
I can't stop.
It's over four, I think, fourteen.
One of the new regs is for them.
Oh, no, twenty. It's twenty now because they had to raise all the bridges.
So, all right, um I think the board was would feel more comfortable. I think the feeling that I'm getting, I'm sure you was from the lawyer. Uh lawyer, just to, I just to solidify, I see you, I see, I see you, I see where you're coming from, but I just. Think there might be some more comfort level from. From the board as a whole. I think.
I guess, but I I can't understand what he's gonna tell you different than that.
No. Amanda, what you have?
I just have two things.
Go ahead.
That's okay.
Yeah.
So just just going back to the flexible development, how this thing started back in. When we first started coming through in, what, twenty twenty one? With the preliminary development showing the conventional versus the flexible and what we were, how it was designed. Was based on the zoning regulations, and just to read it very, very quickly, is that. Um showing that this development is superior to a conventional development, but. Basically, it allows for greater flexibility and creativity in the design of residential developments. Encouraging the permanent preservation of open space, agricultural land, forests, woodlands. Historic or archaeological sites or other natural resources. Maintaining the town's traditional New England rural character and land use patterns in which small villages can. Contrast with open spaces, farmlands and forests, preserving scenic vistas, providing for the most efficient use. Of municipal and other services, preserving unique and significant natural, historical, and archaeological resources. And encouraging a less sprawling form of development. But not to the extent that such development will visually and environmentally overwhelm the land. So we're, this development that has been in place since twenty twenty one, I would say. Um going back and forth, and now, you know, we've shown a lot counts. And it's been in play um with. With the intent of this, and the discussion has been there since day one as far as the lockout. And we verified that at the January seventeenth meeting that we're okay to kind of finish up. Go with the seventy two lots. It's not overwhelming the area. There's thirty plus acres that are being offered up as open space that will not be caught, not be touched. Open space is intended for not necessarily providing trails or access or saying, hey. Come over here with the big red flashing lights like you see in Beetlejuice. Enter here, you know, it's not like that. It's. It's preserved land and it's natural state that if somebody wants to go and explore, they're gonna go explore. Whether there's a path down there or not, people are gonna go off the beaten path. So the intent of this development and this flexible subdivision all along has been to preserve and condense and. Get the additional five lots based on um. The requirements and the lot counts based on your land. The land is one parcel. It's two tracts of land, one deed, one parcel that the railroad came through, and I know I'm repeating myself, but. Again, just kind of bringing everything back, that open space is not intended to. Create specific trails and paths and playgrounds and and stuff. Open space is what the trust wants to do with it, but it's land that's preserved. It's part of the development for um lockout. But it's not intended for other than areas to preserve as, you know, people can walk back and enjoy the land and it doesn't get touched. All the the critters and animals, they have all their safe spots over there, and you know, there's thirty plus acres that are being preserved as far as this development. Instead of going forward with a conventional development, they could really clear cut. All of that land and then not have any open space um where people can explore legally. You know, people are gonna do it regardless.
All right.
But that's kind of, that's my little spiel, just kind of pulling everything together. On the lockout.
All right, thank you, Amanda. Then one last thing, can you mind just send, because I bumped in the car today, just send him that or resend if you've already sent it, the revisions that you guys had made. Uh then he had that original letter of points that he put, that is, can you just send it again?
Yes, we did. Just ju- can you just send it again?
No, I sent it today.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, so we sent.
Okay, perfect. All right, because he's actually, I know he's on vacation, but I know he said, because I bumped into him, they asked him about it.
He did ask for a whole plan set. Um it's a like a fifty-four sheet plan set that I know we dropped four. Large copies and eight small copies off the planning back in February.
Yeah.
Are they supposed to be issued to him?
They're not on, it's supposed to clerk.
Kirk gets one of those copies. Does it show any of its comments? Enter any of the comments?
Yes.
All of them.
Sure. I mean, they're not itemized and circled on the plans, Kirk's comments, but.
They accept electronic ones as well.
He 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 got that.
He wanted, he wanted.
The print?
Oh, we'll give him a paper.
Okay, you might just give him a paper just to.
It's just a huge.
Just to be sure. Yeah.
He said eleven by seventeen. I do that for that.
All right, before we move on, Bob, did you have anything since you came?
I have a question about the tunnel. Um is it gonna be handicapped access? Is it gonna be up to code? Which means it has to be lighted?
The 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 open space?
The tunnel, the tunnel itself? Is it gonna be handicap accessible?
Well, I I I think if we do that, we can't alter. I mean, based upon the bylaw, we just, that's supposed to leave.
So it will be up to the railroad whether or not to make it handicap accessible.
It would be very difficult to make that. Handicap accessible. It's it's quite a steep drop down to it and from it, so.
That's my next question, because if it's not handicap accessible, is the railroad gonna? We we, from what I can hear, no offense, railroad hasn't said one way or another, and I haven't heard anything about any railroad. Being contacted or saying whether what they approve or not approve, or if I. They could say that deed no longer exists. I I have no idea for you.
Well, I I'm not, I'm, no, it's it's.
I don't say that. I I don't, I'm not saying you don't have it.
I I know.
It but but these are things, i- and uh could be a stupid thing, i- and not an only thing. I spent a year in a wheelchair. I was told I had a ten percent chance of whether I ever walk again. Which is either here and there. But you know what? I like open space. I used to hunt, I fish, and I'll um. If the open space is there for people. To see and enjoy. Should it be for everybody?
Yeah, and that's what we wanna make it. Also, they want to make.
But why should the town have to?
They know. It has nothing to do with the town.
I think the point is they wanna leave it as natural landscaping, not.
So would the railroad have to be contacted to see whether they're gonna make it handicap accessible, or, you know, are they gonna do the work to it?
You got Mount Manadok, Mount Graylock, okay? Are the hiking trails wheelchair accessible? No. They're open space.
They're open space.
You know, you know, I mean, I I don't recall ever seeing a wheelchair up on top of Mount Manhattanok. I know we're, you know, unless you drive up to the top of Graylock.
I understand.
And you have somebody running, you're not gonna see somebody.
I I understand that, but.
The mid-state trail, you're gonna see somebody in a wheelchair running down the mid-state trail.
But things have changed over the last few years too, and laws have changed over the last few years too. I'm not saying something that was grandfathered in or not. I don't know if it is or not. That's what I'm asking, and I would like to find out the answer to that.
First of all, railroad's not gonna do anything. Um and I can tell you that, they they just, we're we're just turning over what we have. To to the to the trust, that that's they consider it open space. That's all. It's not gonna have, they're not gonna change anything right away. Nothing's gonna change. Okay, I'm sorry, I've taken up so much.
Well, that's all right. It is, it is what is. All right, do you have a motion to continue to make for us, and please get on.
Uh who's, uh who's, uh whose advice are we looking for? Is it through uh to, okay, so he should be a little bit quicker.
Yeah, that's where I would chose him because. He tends to get things done faster.
And what did we ask? To rule on?
We asked him, I gave him all the information we have, the application, the deeds and everything.
No, um C thirty one.
And you know what the applicant is asking for? That, you know, can this, he has been up the use of public access.
So can the easement be used?
Just a access for the house, because it's property.
Okay, so can the easement be used for public access, which is.
Do whatever I like with it, you know, you have the right to pass back and forth. I mean, uh, here's the problem, lawyers can tell you whatever you wanna hear. They can find a way to make it work this way, way it works that way. Every time a lawyer gets involved, I gotta get a lawyer involved. It's just, it's a nightmare, but I, I don't know that it. My point I'm trying to make is I don't think it needs to get that far. I'm happy to let you listen to it, but this guy's gonna come back. I, I hope you, you didn't expect me to pay for it, cause you didn't ask me to, because the legal opinion is gonna cost. A ton of money, especially if you sent them the application, the deed, and he's gonna read all that and go through all those deeds and everything. You gotta, that's gonna be a big bill.
I guess.
That's fine, yeah, yeah, I just. I, I still wanna have to pay for it out of my funds that I gave.
I, I hate it.
Okay.
Alright, do you have a motion to continue this to May first?
Um, yeah, I'll make a motion to continue, Kurt, so flexible subdivision plans to May first.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Alright, next up, we have a public hearing contained for ESA proposal zoning by law amendment to add utilities scale of five megawatt battery storage. System overlay district. I have an email here from, uh, Wes Schaefer. I will read it in its entirety. Dear members of the child planning board, we are ready to respectfully withdraw petition to amend the child of children zoning by law for the creation of. The energy storage overlay district. We really appreciate the time and consideration you have dedicated to review and workshop with opposed by law language with us. As made apparent at the April third meeting, a broader engagement with childhood residents is necessary to ensure that our proposals align more closely with community. Needs and aspirations. In response here available to the rest, we plan to initiate a series of community engagements, activities aimed at involving and collaborating with. Local residents to refine our proposed in time for the October town meeting. It's an honor to work with you over the recent months. We're grateful for your guidance and support on the force to reapproaching you with a revised proposal in the fall regards to Wes Schaefer. For ESA.
Yeah, the plan board would have to take action to grant the. Property owner to withdraw the application or the app. They're requesting in the planning board would just grant.
Is that really what they wanna do or?
Yes, I guess they just wanna better prepare the child, do public outreach and everything before. They pursue the planning board. I know they're gonna be cutting it close again, but.
Right, that's why we keep it open and they do whatever they wanna do and.
Well, they're withdrawing, well, they're withdrawing.
They're withdrawing.
Trying the application, so we close the public hearing and.
And that's it?
Yeah, since they withdrew.
They'll have to reapply.
Yeah.
But while they're reapplying, they still can do the community.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So.
Good chair. Quick, cause I know it's really.
Yes.
Um, just because a public hearing is still open, is the board gonna be considering a best by law and. And not what ESA is pretty bored, the battery, battery energy storage system bylaws. That have been, um, I sent a copy to Randy for the meeting, for the last meeting.
Oh, the Leicester ones?
So Leicester has it where, um, Athol, uh, there's one working in Rochester, there's a bunch of towns that have these. Uh, these bylaws and they can be tailored for, um, for your particular town. For what you wanna see, what zones you want this in, it has environmental, um, performance standards and everything else, so I would strongly. One strongly, um, encouraged that you look at the best by law. And, you know, what, regardless of what ESA is gonna do, that it would be better for the planning board to put forward a by law at town meeting, that it would be for them to approve somebody else's idea. And send that to my meeting. There's a lot of movement now, the best by law follows, a lot of the state regulations. It'd be very, very good for the town. You can keep it out of the water, out of the residential areas, you can control the setbacks. There's all kinds of things that you can do on this, this best by law and, and I will, I will throw up my hand that, you know, if, if there's any sort of. Committee or by law review team for, for best to try to get on town meeting, Warren and men.
I think it's a good idea for the, the board to do that. Who authored that template?
Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, I believe. Oh, Pioneer Valley?
I'll look for that, yeah.
So, we're in Leicester, we're making, uh, the. The one that's going to town meeting, um, that's, that's more specific for town and follows the state guidelines for. Um, tier three and four sizes particularly, the big, the big large free, uh, standalones.
Yep.
Yes.
Alright, it'll be a fun project, this, you're not gonna be here, this shit's gonna rain, boss.
Me and.
Board, you might be better off to grant or draw, only because we still run against. Timelines on public hearings and I don't know how long it's gonna take them to resubmit back to the board, so. I'm sure that we're reaching out and trying to continue before they submit the new application.
Well, we can do parallel, they can do their thing and we can do our thing. As far as looking at what we wanna look at and points that we want in.
Yeah, by law in general, right.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks, thanks, thank you. Nice to see everybody again, yes.
Right, alright.
Planning entitlement or energy storage overlay districts.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Alright, do we have a motion to accept, uh, ESA's withdrawal of their petition to amend the child, child zoning by law for creation? Energy storage overlay district?
So.
You don't wanna repeat all that?
Sorry, just to be thorough. It's into withdrawal. I'll, I'll second it. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 And you took that right from there.
Right, second, second line of his email. That's all so smooth. Alright, we have, uh, some, uh, draft minutes from March twentieth.
I'll show up after the meeting soon. There's, I'd probably make the next meeting anyways, see what's going on with all this other stuff.
Always welcome. Almost all the way.
Unfortunately, my wife. I gotta go to my wife's house and.
Thank you.
To her place, so. Her house is down by the river animal and I have it up here. Wait, she gets sick of me and come up here. When you're sick of her, I come up here. It's a, it's a win-win.
So, I mean, I think that was adjusted because that was a request of. Conservation to. Take that and centralize it in areas instead of having little strips of open space between everything, which. That's, I thought that was what that was about.
But this was his, um, the reviews. And it's never been closed, okay? I make a motion to approve the minutes as accepted.
This is the one I zoomed in on here.
Yes.
Hello, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, aye. Alright, other business, um, was it last week, a, a phone call complaint came in from sixty-sixth Southwood Road? About, uh, about Amazon, similar to the one of the neighbor that we talked about. Last week, who's at sixty-two Southwood Road, which is right to the, uh, next to the entrance of Amazon. He has some, what, one up coming over and stuff like that and, you know, she.
Yeah, um, Lee Blackwell and, uh, the people that engineered for Amazon, actually met with the property owner. They agreed to do everything the property owner wanted. Until they get to the point that the property owner wants them to replace the, the railroad tie retaining wall. That, that's why they have, the right pictures of how they're showing you that. The retaining walls are old and rotted, well before Amazon.
Yeah.
Ever arrived on the scene, you know, Amazon used to everything until they get to that and now the. Property owner will not agree to anything because Amazon is not willing to replace the, uh. Railroad retirement retaining wall. They're willing to do everything but that. They've satisfied their property owner's concern.
Now, I wanna do that to sixty-two Southwood Road. If you'll do it for sixty-six. Cause I think, I think I talked to the resident at sixty-six, sixty-two Southwood.
Well, this is, this is sixty-six.
Yeah, but sixty-two has a complaint and he gets no answers back from Lee. And I think at the rainstorm we had last Thursday, Friday, he said he has a video of water coming over the, his back retaining wall off the site.
At sixty-two or sixty-two?
Sixty-two, Steve's.
This is the new one.
Yes, this is the one that came in this week, was sixty-six. Sixty-two has been an ongoing issue that Lee refuses to do anything about. Granted, yeah, the reason why Lee is sat in here last week and said, yeah, he hasn't heard back from, heard from Steve at sixty-two is cause he doesn't give Steve an answer, so Steve kinda just gave up. So, I mean, my recommendation is until. I, I don't know if the site visits were at sixty-six, but. Um. If, don't, I know they're gonna be looking for temporary occupancy over the summer, correct?
Yeah.
Don't give them any sign off until at least sixty-two and part of sixty-six is taking care of.
Well, I can understand, you know, fixing the problems, but.
Yeah, but this, yeah, that's pushing it, that's pushing it. Correct, I know, and the property's behind them.
Yeah.
Yeah, makes no sense.
Even for the temporary certificate block, you would get to put up, uh.
Yeah.
All the unfinished work, so. And we can make, not only that. The, these two property owners satisfied.
Within reason, yeah, until. I mean, I, I, I think we can act as an intermediary between, between them and maybe we need to. Do a site visit and, and talk about what.
Yeah, well.
What we would support, what we would support as a board.
The, the property owner at sixty-six has actually requested a meeting and. Graves has basically been saying, it's not Amazon's problem, um. Yeah, I honestly don't know if that's an acceptable answer. So, it might be better that not only we do a site.
Yeah.
This property owner wants a, a site walk on the property with Lee Blackwell. Uh, myself, Graves, it might be good to have at least one planning board member there.
I, I'm in town, I can do it.
Yeah, and I suggest do sixty-two Southwood Road at the same.
Yeah, do both properties so that we're all on the same page.
Little regularly available to, um, here, yeah, a little bit of time, so.
So, I'll reach out, once we schedule something, I'll reach out to the two of you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then, you know.
Do we have their complaints documented, like specifically?
Well, I get it on a, you know, telephone pad, uh, you know, but. Property owner at sixty-two has had complaints before.
Yeah, yeah.
And sixty-six, I'm sure they'll give me a formal complaint with all of his issues because. I mean, essentially, both property owners have the same kind of issues. They have runoff problems that they say are resulting from Amazon.
If you can add, or if you talk to them again through email or voice, ask them to just. Document it as much as they can, just to timestamp this stuff.
Right, yeah, cause I, I do know that Amazon's looking for TCO. Somewhere around there, but the planning board has the purview to say, no, I know. If there's other outstanding issues, I think they're. I think it's wishful thinking, cause I think that they're gonna need approval from Mass DOT for the entrance and even though. They're supposed to be redoing the paving and everything like on May fifteen, but. That doesn't mean that. Mass DOT is gonna give them approval for that entry yet, you know, so. There's a lot of under, you know, I know, you know, the site workers are trying to get out of there, you know.
Alright, our, our approval is limited to their compliance with the plan submitted, right? So, if they did that, like how, how do we say, yeah, but this guy is watering his yard, like how do we?
You can do it by whatever the, um. Look at the site plan, the construction documents that they submitted.
Right.
Cause John, in theory, if you increase the slope or increase the grade, once you in theory increase runoff. So, look at that, then look at the as-built and then look at the design. And, and I had, I did look at, I think I came in here one day, I think a month ago and I, it seemed like the, the grade has incre-. It was increased on the construction, the permitting plans, I don't know what it is in the field.
Right.
That's the actual as, well, now the act, is there as will have to be certified? Let's say certified, stamped by.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Any deviations have to be noted.
Correct.
Request for completion.
So, it's a.
Well, they need to provide that to get a temporary occupancy though.
I'm sorry, say that again.
They wouldn't need to necessarily have an as-built state plan ready for temporary occupancy, they can always say they're still, it's a work in progress.
Still open.
Yeah, well, they, but they should have a plan showing what improvements have been done versus what. Graves engineer would have to come up with a bond amount for what hasn't been approved, so they gotta give. Graves, at least the as-built up to this point to the work in progress. Might not be the final as-built, but it would be. An as-built plan up until this point, so, yes, this should be. Point showing everything in its current condition, you know, at least from, you know, the finished portions of the property, so.
Checks in the mail.
Yeah.
Dog ate for lunch.
Yeah, I know.
Excuses why I don't submit an asthma.
Yeah, right.
You rotate them every once in a while.
It's in the, it's in the works, phone's breaking up. TBS is down today.
Yep.
I'm saying. The leverage is what we have with that, and so in order, and it, it, it should shake out fairly. And you can't blame Am- Amazon for thinking they're getting shook and down. If some guy wants something done in the front of his yard, it's not. Or it's, he's not doing the same, if it's not.
Yeah.
There's gotta be a bottom line for, for people to be made whole.
Yeah, correct.
So, I would say a, a meeting, and you guys talk, you guys go in the meeting, come to some agreement that everybody's, you know. And I'm sure.
They may pull, but.
Yeah.
But. Yeah, that's a little, right, that's more of a shake down, you know.
Who's the problem with the poles? What's it?
Steve. Oh, yeah, it's sort of temporary until they get the power and.
Yeah, six and two.
Those are temporary poles, but.
Well, yeah, there's some there now, but some are gonna go away.
Correct, yeah. So.
Wasn't sure if that was a third thing, a third person, but no.
We asked Mike too, you know, Mike, why, why does Mike feel that, that, that's not.
Yeah.
Put Mike on the spot too.
Why, you know, and I have, you know, one, I shouldn't say it this way, but Mike sending the V team over there all the time. Mike doesn't seem to go out doing inspections anymore. He's got people at grave doing the forum.
I'll buy him donuts too.
Yes, I think it's July first.
So, his contract's up July first, should we send out, uh, an RFP to see if we can find?
So, I know I've gotten some complaints, not just from family members, but just other engineers. Another engineer, and then we got, we wanted an engineer that was in front of us tonight, but, um. Just little things, I guess, and.
Yeah.
I was taking it back a little bit.
It doesn't hurt to, to shop around a little bit.
No, it, it, I, I think that they're all gonna be within the same, but I guess you gotta look at the level of service too.
Service level and a, and a remedy, like how much if you don't do it.
One of the things that kind of. We see the grays build. They have, you know, you, they have an engineer review the plans, then they give them to Mike to. they have, you know, you, they have an engineer review the plans, then they give Mike to review them again. Well, if you get an engineer reviewing them, and the applicants getting charged both times. It's like a double review, it's like, if Mike is gonna review the plans, review the plans.
Yeah.
You know, don't, you, you shouldn't have to have, I know he's a principal and everything, but if you have confidential employees to review the plans, why do you get a look at them again and then charge the applicant? Cause the biggest complaint I've had, I mean, we've had some over the timing, but it's the billing. I mean, it seems to, you know, we, we increased our escrow for applications from two thousand to four thousand, while the first bill comes in, they're close to four thousand now. You know, they're burning up the escrow with one review. I mean, some of them have a result of uh, you know, an incomplete engineering application, but some of them I honestly have a hard time justifying.
Well, wouldn't there something with, if we had like um, McClure do it? But he couldn't, obviously you can't review your own, he has a lot in Charlton, is that one reason why we didn't try it?
I think we'd have to find somebody that probably doesn't do a lot of work.
I spoke to McClure about this pre- previously, and he specifically, we have engineers who do private work, and then they have engineers who do public work, and they keep them separate just so they can work for towns and do private work for.
Still gives a conflict of interest.
No, it is, that's why, like, I, I think Chris had mentioned to me, wouldn't, wouldn't want, wouldn't apply, or put in a bid to provide service to the town. That's why probably someone from, whether it be Holden or outside of the.
So I think to put out a request for bid, doesn't mean that we need to particularly necessarily change, but it would give us other options maybe in the future to think and, and, and I think that would have to be done now.
Yes.
If we're looking for July, I checked, it might be a little bit late for that. And, but at least get it started, might be, yeah, you know, just to kind of throw some other options out there.
Yeah, then also Radiant mentioned to me, I'll, some, he, they'll just stop and do inspections when someone doesn't doesn't request one, then they go for it. So that's another, another thing, like the uh, the soul of our North Sturber Road, he had mentioned that, Chris had mentioned.
Yeah, and I had uh, basically, you know, put a stop to it and make sure applicant authorizes. Yeah, the applicant authorizes inspections, that's one thing, but they go out and do inspections. And then it gets a really gray area between, is he there for the planning board? Or is he there looking at stormwater issues which aren't the purview of the planning board? That's conservation commission, the bill should go to conservation commission. So and, you know, I've been at odds with the conservation commission, like you know, they try to, they don't wanna set up ESCO's accounts, well, that's not our problem. You know, and so they try to sway it, it, you know.
Just do them and they'll. Okay.
Which is not fair to the planning board or the applicant, you know, so.
I mean, there's, there's Time Bond and there's Fussing.
Yes.
There's a bunch of.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of good.
Time Bond representatives.
Oh, yeah.
What else, we hire one, we hire one.
Fussing mill, there's, there's uh a handful of, of larger firms that have a, a brand, it's almost like a bunch of renewable work. And we're doing this a little.
So let's put a proposal up, let's see what we get back for bids and, and interest.
Okay.
I mean, this is not.
We need a vote on that?
No, no, it's not.
We don't need to vote?
Oh, yeah.
But actually, probably would be a good idea that we just take a phone vote to show the planning boards for.
Make a motion that we put contracting services for engineering for the planning board out for proposal. Um, just to see what we get.
Second down.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Mark, Randy, you have any, any updates, anything new that's come in?
Oh, the only thing, um, I, I gave this to you earlier, we're not here until May first, but Graves in engineering latest opinion on decommission bonds. That's just for your review, we'll be discussing at the next meeting.
He did a good job. Did you s- see the email I, I might have sent over about this property and put all the bullet points together, yeah, yeah, and, and he must have seen that. Two of his comments, yeah, so this is great.
I didn't, I didn't see it here, unless I missed it.
I want to see the paper.
Glad, very last four, five, raised one.
You, you think things are still in order? Yeah.
This game, uh, it's a bill just, so I would take it in just some, it's almost like a bid, it would be like a bid, so you'd have items, all the items that you need to cover. You'd have whatever the quantities are, and what's the cost, just right. And you, and you populate what you feel, you, you need LSP, you need, you need abatement services, you need a class, environmental health and safety, you need a, you'll need all that stuff.
Yeah.
There's something to go with it.
Soil testing.
Yeah, everything, you need the whole battery of, of, just to be covered by that, that's just.
And I do agree with Mike that, you know, even though the applicant uses a certain dollar amount for doing it, we have to use prevailing ways. Because it became a township, township, clean up the mess, we have no choice, we have to.
And we're getting away from, oh, it's uh, twenty thousand dollars per megawatt, like that is not relevant, that's not our cost at all. It's this, take, take this.
Yep.
Make an outline of all the costs.
Template, yeah.
Removal, transportation, permitting, soil testing, add an atom.
Have an LSP, so you're not dealing with the town, the LSP is responsible on the site.
So maybe we should, I think maybe get rid of the decommissioning bond policy that we have and update the bylaw probably to talk about decommissioning more as write up a plan with itemized costs. And then we'll have our engineer review it, and that will be the decommissioning bond dollar amount. Instead of having a separate policy, cause the policy, it seems like, from the advice of our attorney, there were some conflicting things between the policy.
Oh, yes, correct.
And it would be easier, our bylaws are actually pretty good, they're a little open-ended, so we could tighten them up, um. Is it too late to get a bylaw change on the town meeting?
For May. May, yeah, it's way too involved.
Okay.
But I mean.
Which isn't that far away, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's not that far away.
Try to rewrite it, there's probably some other stuff maybe we need to clean up in the bylaws too.
And this one with the North Sturber's solar, I mean they're willing to work with, you know, with Mike's proposal, just update the dollar amount based on current prices and that'll kind of resolve that problem for us for a while, buy us time to amend the bylaws.
And, and add all of these other line items, you know, into their cost, yeah, then, then we're good. So let's see what their reaction is to this.
Yeah. They could be, cause the dollar amount didn't really change, did it?
Uh, it should, because their previous, whatever was two hundred twenty-one thousand, it was like uh, ten thousand dollars per megawatt. But that had nothing about restabilization and removal and permitting for.
It also included, included some discount for recycling too.
Yeah, so we can get these, we can get, you know, money for recycling, so.
There's no net recycling dollars.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, this is good, excellent, thanks for.
Alright, anyone have anything else?
Yeah, I took a ride behind the, the new development there going on two thirty-five, is that across the um, in Oxford, no, in um the big developer going down towards Sturber, I, two twenty, what?
Yeah, forty-one.
Two forty-one.
Yeah.
So, the, that, big, yeah.
Did you get them there?
The, the, the storage facility to be named later.
Yeah, where they, yeah.
They actually had, uh, they were stopped by the conservation commission, cause they had a lot of issues with that detention basin up by the road, the sergeant's driver was here, the detention basin here, water doesn't flow uphill, you know, so they had to do a lot of fixing there and everything, and also um, I think they had to amend their MEPA application, or somehow the DEP is involved with the or maybe not amend their MEPA application, but uh land use application, they had to amend that, so.
So they're stopped because their, their clearing hasn't, they're not fully cleared on.
No, they, they, um, I don't know if the roads, I haven't seen her, so I don't know if she's given permission to start clearing again in the back.
Yeah.
You know, they got the driveway in now, as you can see, but I don't know.
They got a gate now.
Did you say you drove up there?
I drove out behind, it's very nice behind there, if you go down the road by the golf course.
Yeah.
And you go take a right.
Yeah.
And there's a little development, there's a little neighborhood back there.
There is.
Yeah.
And the road just ends, right?
But there's houses still there going in the, in the dirt road. But that clearing comes all the way back to that neighborhood that's back there, so.
Correct.
And there, that's McKinstry Burke back there, so that was kind of some, taken back by how, cause you saw the silk fence line right from the, the uh the property, and there was, and if I'm right, they abandoned they, they, they do, the previous developer is not gonna use that property back on that road. Not gonna go across here, so just, just have to keep an eye on that as they go forward.
Yeah.
But it's still just a spectacle, from what, from what I heard, there's still no owner or.
No tenant?
We, we reserve, I've been told they don't have a tenant yet, I don't know that's factual, or they just kind of keep their card close to the vest. But I do know typically, once somebody construction is started, then people, you know, when it's on paper, it's one thing.
Right.
Once construction started, okay, this project clearly is gonna go forward, then they attract interest.
Momentum.
Yeah, momentum.
Motivated buyers.
Motivated sellers.
Yeah.
I have a question, I can't think of what it was gonna be now. Since it's after ten o'clock, the rain shut down.
You have one more meeting, right?
I might, I don't know. I think so, May first?
Yeah.
You're making a commitment.
You have another meeting. Whether you come to it or not.
Oh, the applications for thirty-five North Main Street, you can, can you leave them here, just so, it's a lot of paperwork, I just don't wanna have to make copies again.
Alright, did they have, um, any elevations in here, did they have?
I think they did.
I know.
Yeah, there are some elevations.
Oh, that's, I remember, I was gonna say, so, do we submit or require digital submissions or anything paper? Cause I know most towns right now don't even accept paper, they take all digital.
Yeah, um yes, we require digital uh, set, sent to us.
Okay. Can, can we put a one drive someplace that when that stuff comes in, at least for planning board use? We've got access to those plan, I mean, you could just take them up, the, the drive and create a new folder and put them in there, and that way, you know, if we need to look at something, we can always go back and look at it instead of searching my front two, two papers that, that, you know.
You said you loved that.
That was, may, may not be there. Yeah, I'm more, and I'm sitting here tonight going.
Oh, no.
I'm trying to zoom in and, so, yeah, I mean, if, if, I mean, if we got them on the computer anyways, just put them in a, put them in a one drive.
Usually they'll say to you, send the electronic paper in the file.
Yeah, we get, either way, the naming, I gotta do is a hacks on me. We could, I mean, yeah, yeah, I mean, at least, you know, even if it's yeah, something, some sort of label that makes it easier to find than just maybe a date.
Yeah, yeah. But yeah, dates is a tough invention. Never else, it'll be a mess.
Yeah. Um, any ideas?
Yeah.
Do you?
Yeah.
You got some good one?
Do a fine site industry, street address, you know, and drop it in there.
With a date, he's the database guy.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I, I have found all the time, it's like a lot of the applications here by property owner wants a chain, and then. See the addresses, the way they go.
Well, yeah, we, because we don't know lot numbers really, right, so street addresses, yeah, yeah.
That's the one thing that never changes.
Yeah.
Yeah, sometimes I won't have, I'll have like zero Sturber Road and the lot number, where you have to look it up, but, you know.
But it's on our agenda, is that we can always look back and say, okay, it was, um, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, let's, that was my question, thought it came to me before the end of the year.
We, we, we were waiting for it to come.
Took a while.
Well, should do adjourn.
Uh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye.